This is.
This is all, yeah.
You always get one on camera?
I don't think I do. I'm I just.
Okay, well, I thought you said one.
Um, I can't.
And this is the issue.
I don't know.
So.
Two minutes, two minutes. Sorry to scare you.
Two minutes, two minutes. Stand by. All right, and here we go. Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the school committee this evening, Tuesday, September fifteenth. This meeting is being recorded for LCTV. It's being aired live and being livestreamed at longmeadow.org. If we can begin with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. Correspondence?
Um, if there is correspondence for this meeting, an emailed letter from Ms. Catherine Pacella, dated September eighth, expressing her interest in serving on the superintendent's search committee.
Okay. We have no visitors this evening, so I'll move to school committee comments. Any? Okay, I would just like to acknowledge our teachers and principals and staffs for a great start of the school year and fabulous back-to-school nights. All of them were very well attended and very well done, and I know it's a very long day for our teachers and principals. So I I thank you very much. It was very informative.
Elementary's this week.
Oh, you're this week? Sorry. Middle and high school. But I'll thank the elementary school in advance.
It'll be a great day. It'll be a great day.
Huh? It will be a great day.
Wednesday and Thursday this week.
That's right. All right. So we do have the superintendent's report.
First, happy Rosh Hashanah to our Jewish family celebrating. Uh, second, the schools did open successfully. The first couple of weeks have gone quite well, except for the blistering heat. Glenbrook in particular really suffered as they didn't have any air conditioning in classrooms. So we thank our Glenbrook staff and students for really putting their best foot forward during that heat, that heat, um, spell. Teachers report happy students and the principals report good morale of staff across the district. It's nice to have all buildings buzzing with learning once again. There is not much more information on MCAS in park, but I did give you an update on what is happening. The DESE has yet to make a decision on whether the park test will be mandated at all schools in the Commonwealth. They have reported that some MCAS tests will remain steady regardless of the decision, particularly as tools for determining if students are ready to graduate high school. Aspects of the ongoing assessment program include all districts will continue to administer MCAS science and technology, engineering, which they call STE, tests in grades five and eight and in the high school. The high school MCAS test, grade ten English language arts, grade ten math, and high school STE will be administered as the competency determination graduation requirement through the class of two thousand nineteen. Districts will continue to administer the MCAS alternate for students designated for alternate assessment. And in addition to testing in ELA mathematics and STE, English language learner students must participate in access for ELL testing.
Excuse me, can I ask, what does access mean?
It's a special test for ELL students.
Okay.
Uh, Michelle Grodsky, Russell Dupree, and I visited five schools. During our walkthrough, the school committee members were able to see the clean conditions, check some of the summer work, and observe space changes at the schools. Chief Stankowitz called to report that road conditions were safe the first week of school. Police officers observe various locations and report all that went well. They see no need to add further crossing guards at this time.
Any questions for Marie?
Are they, are they gonna continue to monitor, uh, from time to time those roads just to make sure that they're not seeing anything, especially, you know, as, I mean, ninety-one is about to turn into a parking lot?
Mm-hmm. He will continue to monitor them.
Can I just suggest, uh, we had some questions about methodology. If you have a police officer in uniform observing traffic flows, that affects traffic flow. I think it's called Heisenberg's principle. The observation actually interferes with the the test result. What methodology are they using to judge whether an intersection needs a guard?
They have cruises stationed at certain places. They look, they look.
Again, that's, okay, all right.
I understand, but they they observe, um, they also look at the width of the street to see if the sight line's clear. They actually had counts on how many children were walking the route, uh, and they were observing how they were crossing.
John, you're looking for them to set up like a counter, probably, right? Like, you know, those strips they set up on the, on the streets?
Sure.
I mean, I know, I would love to see one on Burbank as well, at the corner of Burbank and Salem, um, or Burbank and Converse. But, um, I'm sure that that would probably be helpful, because then there would be no police officer there tell, you know, that's making the cars slow down. I don't know how we can push that besides continuing to ask.
I I've asked. I suggest you call Chief Stankowitz and.
Well.
I I've asked, and that's, that's where I've gotten.
I'm not in the chain of command. Uh, someone should make a call. The chair or the superintendent.
I've made. We've made calls, and that's the response we've been given.
And what if we sit, well, it's inadequate.
I, I, so I think they, I don't wanna tell people what to do, but I feel like it's just gonna be hearing from people. Like, if there's people that are, people within the community that are upset about it, they're gonna have to let people know.
Within the community?
I mean, if if I've called and Marie's called and you've called, I mean, we're three people to them, and they're giving us, and I mean, if they're giving Marie the same answer they're giving me, I'm sure they'll say the same thing to you. So I just think it's gonna have to be, I mean, when I called them about another location that I was concerned about, I I went to the town manager and he told me that accidents had to happen, like, which isn't a really great answer, to be honest with you.
It's not, it's a horrible answer.
I know.
Well, I mean.
The horse has been stolen because the barn door wasn't closed.
Right, so I think they need, just need to hear from more people besides us.
Well, I think, you know, I think it would be helpful not to flood the police department with calls, but if the residents do see people speeding down streets, and that's just not parents of schoolchildren, but those are people who live on those streets.
Yep.
You know, they they should, you know, report that to the police department. I mean, that took place on Greenacre. They took the line off the road. I mean, there's, you know.
Yeah, you can get license plates numbers and call.
There's plenty of, yeah, I mean, there's plenty of ways, uh, you know, to inform the police department. If they're not, I mean, if they're not gonna monitor it, but it seems like they're going to monitor it. I just, you know, I, just as, as a sort of comment, I guess.
Well, maybe parents should call the police chief and the town manager and let them know about their concerns.
If if.
I'm sure they logged their calls. They might use that methodology.
Press?
I know, um, so I went to the PTO meeting on Friday at Blueberry Hill. And last year it came up too, but there's, and Kim and Michelle were there last year. But there is a problem with, it's a lot of these intersections, and we can't have crossing guards at every intersection, but some of the ideas that some parents told me about were, one, some of the intersections we've improved to make it more clear that it's a crosswalk, so we can either raise them, or we can at least paint them to make them more visible. Um, there's also those little, they look like little people that you put out around crossing times, and so that kind of makes people slow down, or at least know that kids might be walking across there. So those are kind of interim steps that maybe we could think about. Um, that would be something we'd have to go to the town about, obviously, as well. But I know at the PTO meetings, they really do, it's one of the biggest complaints is that somehow we gotta get people to actually pay attention to the crosswalks and stop when kids are trying to cross. And I've seen it myself a number of times going to work in the morning where people just don't stop, and the kids are halfway across the road. I don't know, you know, we can't do much about that as a school committee, but I think at least if we maybe try some of those interim steps, or, you know, the police department's very good about it. When.
Absolutely.
The parents all say that when they call, the the police look into it. They'll, if you get the license plate number, they'll actually go and speak with the person.
Yep.
Um, but it does happen pretty frequently, especially right around here.
And I mean, I don't know. I haven't been down Farmington and Ellington, but.
I've been driving down Farmington and Ellington when I go to work, um, anywhere between eight oh five and eight twenty-five, and there's not hardly anybody out. There are lots of students on the other side of the street, um, but none who are crossing directly in front of me, so.
Do they have those, um, barrels with the state law to yield, the yield barrels there?
The orange barrel? Not there, no.
Because I know when I called about one of the intersections I was concerned about, the guy was like, I've put, we've put barrels there, you know, I don't know what else we can do.
No, there.
We can't afford a.
There wasn't, but there weren't any other cars on the street at the time, um, at, on the, what is it? We've been in school a couple of weeks, so about five mornings that I've been going through, there were no other cars on those streets. But Russ, I would suggest that, um, letting the the Blueberry parents know, again, since the crosswalks and crossing guards fall under police department, the interim suggestions that you're making should go directly to the police. It's not something that we can start putting out or, you know, painting crosswalks or clearing, um, or putting out the little people signs or clearing vision lines. That would all have to go through the police.
Yeah, I think it would be our role to let the police department know that parents are asking about it, is it something they could do or not? I mean, we're kind of.
Well, happy to communicate that.
That, yeah, that's all it would be.
But again, it's the jurisdiction. It's up to the police department what they choose to do.
Right, but I mean, they can say no. But we can certainly pass along the suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, they have a budget. They can't do everything everybody wants, but.
Right.
And I just think too, you know, like what we were talking about with the other, um, the methodology point is that hearing from constituents themselves.
Right.
As opposed to just school committee. So I'm, I'm not saying that we as a school committee shouldn't suggest that, but sometimes they listen louder, you know, they listen to to parents who are actually voicing concerns, because they may think, oh, you know, school committee may have heard from one parent.
Yep.
Right.
So that's why I was suggesting that, you know.
Yeah, I think if we did both, it would be good.
Hearing from parents as well would be important. All right. Anything else? All right. Finance sub.
Um, let's see. We discussed, um, we had a couple of building use requests. Um, we are also, um, uh, I think recommend a, um, to spend up to ten thousand dollars for, um, a mentor to the new prin- Williams principal. And, um, let's see, and we had a discussion about what, um, one second, a discussion about of what the available balance is for turn back to town, to the town.
Got it.
All right, so can I?
I know there are a couple of items. Can I have a motion from finance sub?
Or, do you want to talk about any of them, Tom?
We can talk about them. Why don't we have a motion and then we can discuss?
Okay.
Okay, so, um, you have to make it.
I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee turn back up to fifty thousand dollars as outlined in the fiscal year twenty fifteen end-of-year budget report dated nine nine twenty fifteen.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Tom, did you want to explain?
Sure. So in your packet tonight is a, a unitated budget report for the general fund for FY fifteen. You know, it shows the original appropriated amount, transfers that have occurred to date, revised budget, total expenditures to date, and then available balance. Uh, the report shows we have just over forty-seven thousand dollars available as unexpended in FY fifteen. Being that it's general fund, uh, fiscal year closes June thirtieth, we, we really don't have any means of spending that balance. So it would turn back to the town, uh, to be part of the free cash that gets certified uh, sometime later this fall. Um, the only thing that still has to occur would be some budget transfers to address deficits that, uh, exist in certain lines. And earlier this summer, you gave the superintendent the authority to approve those end-of-year transfers. It wouldn't affect the ending balance. The only potential impact that could affect it is closing out any grants. If we have to, uh, move funds, expenditures around to reconcile them back to the amount that was approved for the grant, uh, so it could have a, an impact. But we're pretty much just about complete the grant reconciliation, so I don't anticipate seeing much change, if any, to the amount that's listed on the second to last page.
Any questions or further discussion? If seen, then I'll call for a vote. Call those in favor. Okay.
Okay, the next item was mentor for, uh, okay. I move on the recommendation of the finance subcommittee that the school committee authorize appropriation of up to ten thousand dollars to hire a mentor for the Williams Middle School principal.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Marie, do you want to talk about that, or why we're?
So.
I think mentoring, yes.
Mentoring.
We have a brand-new principal at Williams Middle School, and he's a first-year principal. He's been a, an assistant principal. But I think it would be wise to put a mentor in, and Larry Birdie has agreed to do it if school committee feels that they want to move ahead with this. It would be up to ten thousand dollars. He would have weekly meetings, and if you ran into any trouble, he'd be available to help. I think it's important with the new principal, especially in Long Meadow.
It's you.
That they, um, are familiar with the culture and that they understand how we operate with, um, with staff and expectations and moving forward with goal setting, et cetera.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So just to kind of, just to kind of reiterate or review a little bit, we've done this at Blueberry, we've done this at, uh, at Will, or at Glenbrook. It's not an unusual thing for us to, you know, mentor principals who need them from more experienced principals or, you know, principals who, or, you know, to learn, to learn, you know, to learn, right? That's what a mentor does. Um, I'm trying to think of what I want to say here. So it's not, I just, I guess my point is that it's not unusual for us to utilize this, uh, this function, this personnel function. In fact, we, we like it. It's been very successful for us.
Very successful.
We did this at Glenbrook, and it's a preventive measure. That's the way we're thinking of it. Uh, avoid problems, anticipate problems.
Sure.
And not get into them as a result.
Well, and I think, you know, on, on the subject of Glenbrook, I think we've seen, you know, we have a fantastic principal there, um, you know, and I, I think that she, you know, certainly benefited from, from having a mentor, and, you know, I think, I think we're seeing that right now of just how well she's doing and what a great school it is right now. So.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Call those in favor. All right. Um, I.
And some approvals, the building news. That's, we don't have a vote on that.
Correct. Finance sub is authorized to approve this.
Okay, that's it, I guess.
All right, so just an update. Um, I did attend the SEAL meeting on September the first. Um, you know, this group is very excited to be starting and to, um, hit the ground running. They're very energetic. Um, they do meet the first Tuesday of every month, so that anybody is welcome to attend. They are looking to create a subgroup, um, for the reason of having a chance for parents to be able to connect outside of a formalized setting such as in the school, someplace that they can speak more freely, be more, um, supportive of each other, share experiences and whatnot. Right now, they're talking about calling it a book club, but it may not just be about books. It may, they may review, um, video. They may break it off into more of a support group. That's all being developed right now. Um, they do have a website that is up and running, um, and are looking for input for what parents and community members are wanting on that website. They are also looking to appoint a liaison from SEAL for each school, so that if parents, you know, at one particular school want to know how to get involved, or how to reach services, or how to do that, they're gonna be working on that at their next meeting of, um, trying to get a liaison to each of the six schools in the district. And their biggest, um, work right now is going into John Robis- Robison's presentation, um, which will be coming up in October. And they are encouraging all parents, all community members who are interested to come and, and hear him speak. So that information is up on our website, so that anybody can access it, find out all of the specifics regarding that. But like I said, they're a very, um, energetic group who have put a lot of time and energy into creating what they have, and they're really working on focusing, focusing on advocacy for special education students. So, you know, I told them that evening, and I'll tell them again, thank you so much for the, the work that you're doing. It's important, you know, for our community, and I know it's, it's a lot of time and effort, so. We did have that. I didn't know, um, subcommittee-wise, if Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaboratives met yet?
No, next, uh, Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. Okay, so we'll hear from you next time.
Yep.
Oh, Special Programs Committee?
Yeah, I forgot to mention during the, um, comments, is this an appropriate time to?
Yes, go ahead.
Mention it. This SEAL kind of reminded me that we met on, um, was it this week? No, last week.
Last week.
Today's Tuesday. It was last week. Uh, we met and we reviewed, uh, kind of a timeline. We've got three speakers coming up, uh, into the district this year, and I know that, um, the speakers that we brought in are, were based off of the survey that we sent out to parents in December. Um, so we're hoping that everyone can attend. There is information on the Long Meadow Public Schools website. Um, our first speaker is Wednesday, September thirtieth at seven PM. It's Christine, uh, another hard name, Dubiefer?
Dubidia.
Dubidia? Um, she is a positive change author, uh, speaker and mentor who challenges this notion and helps uncover inherent talents in children and teens. Uh, the event is open to parents K through twelve, um, and we hope that everyone can make it. There's an, a website on our, or on our website, there is a link to Eventbrite, so you can sign up and RSVP so that we can kind of get a head count. Um, you know, it's, we're hoping that you sign up there, but if you forget the last minute, you can still come, right? Like, we don't want anyone to not come because they forgot to sign up. Um, so.
And teenagers are also welcome to come. We're not sure that it will be appropriate for the little ones, but teenagers may benefit from it if you'd like to bring them with their parents.
Right. Uh, and this is our first speaker that we're, we're bringing in to the district, and so.
First of three. And the information's on the bottom of the first page of the newsletter that went out today. And there you go.
Yes.
I've got a, I've got a subcommittee update too. I got legislative.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, this is pretty pertinent for this committee as we continue to talk about, uh, kindergarten. Uh, next week, actually, uh, there's the education, the early education care and, uh, extracurricular activities, or actually, I should say, the education committee, and they're hearing bills on early education care and extracurricular activities, including two bills. Uh, one is S two sixty-seven, which is ensuring high-quality pre-kindergarten education, and another one, which is, uh, S two fifty-three, which is an act relative to pre-kindergarten access. And both of those bills touch on, uh, funding, fully funding kindergarten and pre-kindergarten, uh, education by twenty twenty. Or at least one of them speaks by twenty twenty, uh, with an emphasis on lower income and lower-performing districts first, but certainly asking for action plans. Uh, I can tell you just that there is a lot of movement around this and a lot of support for it, um, so it's something to keep an eye on.
Great. Thank you. All right, um, we do have a policy approval tonight. Michael, did you want to?
Yes. So back in June, um, when the policy subcommittee was last meeting, and we are gonna start meeting again soon, uh, we amended, uh, policy section JC dash R, which speaks to attendance areas. And this policy's been in place for a while. We added a little bit more specifics, uh, to it. And so essentially, the policy outlines the reasons why somebody may request a change in placement for their child uh, in the, the school where they attend, the home school versus where they request to attend. Um, you know, every year we get flooded with requests, uh, for different placements, middle schools, elementary schools. Um, and it becomes sort of arduous for us to, you know, kind of figure out, well, how many kids can we accommodate versus how many kids can't we? And obviously, we don't like to not be able to accommodate children. So, uh, we put in place a deadline for when requests have to be made, uh, so that we know that this is the group of kids, the pool of kids. We don't want to have to be dealing with taking, you know, getting requests over the summer. Um, it puts, uh, you know, it lays out the, you know, how the recommendation for that placement, uh, is made, uh, and it assigns the su-, um, the superintendent with sole discretion over that, uh, that placement. So we, uh, we didn't amend too much. We did mostly just assign that May fifteenth deadline.
I appreciate that.
But at the request of the administration, um, and besides that, the, the policy relatively remains, uh, the same. We received zero public comments on this, um, and so, you know, we presented tonight for approval. And so I'll move that the. for approval. And so, I'll move that the, I move on the recommendation of the Policy Subcommittee that the school committee approve Policy Section JCR attendance areas as presented.
Does I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? And Michael, just for clarification, for parents or community members who might know this by a different name, this would be the equivalent of in-town school choice.
Yes. This is, this is when you have a student that attends one school, and you would like the student to attend a different school in the district. You know, and I would also just add that the policy, even though it hasn't changed, just in case people are wondering, does make provisions for, you know, students with special education or enrolled in special education. It leaves some discretion to the Director of Pupil Services on some of those recommendations as well. Those were all things that existed to begin with, but it's always worthwhile mentioning that this policy does exist if parents do have questions or, you know, are looking to make a request.
Okay. Ross?
So, one thing I was thinking about because of number three deals with enrollment. So, right now, the way the policy reads, if you want to make a request based on another school having smaller class sizes, you can by May 15th. But then later, it's only good for a year, and then we reassess. So, I was wondering if maybe we could use this as a partial tool to level out some of the schools. It probably wouldn't be a solution, but if we had, you know, one school that had substantially less kids, and we gave the option, even sent a notice home to parents to, listen, this year, kind of give them a pre-warning that this is where the classes are a little smaller. If you want to send in a notice by May 15th, we'll consider it. The dilemma would be, I don't think we'd get anybody unless we say it's not just for one year. It would have to be for the career at that building if we did it that way. So, it's really just something to think about, but when I was reading through it, otherwise, three is kind of, I can't imagine we'd get many requests under that one, because if you're only one year, and you might have to go back to the other one, it doesn't make any sense. But if it was for the whole elementary school career, let's say, you know, maybe you would. I mean, I always hear people saying, I might consider going to a different school.
We actually do get several requests, and parents do reapply every single year. I think when school committee made this policy-
In 1980, by the way.
I saw that.
To update it. But it was to make sure that if class size grew at one school, you had the option to say no.
But to get back.
But most of the time, I've never denied someone once they'd been in a school. I've never denied that, denied their entrance into that school the following year, like through elementary school.
So, we have kids applying, or parents applying right now under the class size exemption?
We do.
And sometimes we allow it?
Often, we do.
Okay.
And often, we say no if the class size is too large.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we lose vote. We do have warrants this evening, John?
Okay. I move on recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that we, that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2200 of the School Launch Fund fiscal year 2016 dated September 18th, 2015 in the amount of $58.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Okay, and I move the school committee approve the warrant batch number 3002 of the General Operating Fund fiscal year 2016 dated September 18th, 2015 in the amount of, you ready for this, $586,649.14.
Second.
And it took three hours to check those warrants.
So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, John, for reviewing those warrants.
Don't let it happen again.
We won't spend so much money next time.
Don't spend so much.
All right, so, our main topic of the evening is, and the superintendent's search. At our last meeting, we approved hiring Ray and Associates, and tonight, Dr. Michael Rush from Ray and Associates is here to present to us their action plan and their thoughts about how we're going to move forward and allow us a chance to ask any questions. Most all of us were able today. Dr. Rush had individual interviews with each school committee member where he asked each of us the same 15 questions, so that he could get an idea of what we would like to see in a new superintendent candidate, where we stood, and that. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rush, and he can fill everybody in on what's going on.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, to those I have not seen, I think I know Mr.-
Mr. Mazz.
No, we haven't met yet.
Mazz. But I think everybody else around the table I've, I've met, except the gentleman back here. I assume he's a schoolperson, right?
Yes. That is our Director of Pupil Services.
Yeah, I kind of felt that, because the way his questions were kind of leaning towards you. But I, I'm, first of all, let me, let me say thank you from Ray and Associates for allowing us to work with you in the process of selecting your next superintendent. Now, notice I said the process of selecting. We will not select your superintendent. That is up to the seven of you. What we do is, our goal is to bring you good, qualified, certified candidates. So, when you make decisions, it is our hope that will be so difficult that you're going to have four, five, six people, and you're going to have, not know who to choose. That's our goal. And with that, I'm, again, I'm glad to be here tonight. Little bit about myself, my resume is surround someplace. I don't know if you've seen it, but I was, as I've been watching you, as I sit back there, I watch all of you in your board seats, because I too sat there at once, okay? It was 1985 to 88, and unlike what I went through, whatever the motions that were made tonight, everybody said yes. That's a good thing. And I understand controversy and boards and things that happen, but the fact that all of you passed whatever motions you had tonight, at least on some areas, you're working together. I know oftentimes, you're individuals and you do your individual voting, but I don't know if you did that for me, or whatever.
It was mostly for you.
Sure, Michael, right. They told me you were a politician. But, and I can understand it. But again, I'm here, again, we're happy to be with you, and tonight, I'm going to go some, go through some procedural things, and hopefully, I can answer any questions you may have. And if I can't get the answer, I will get the answer from the office ASAP and get it to the person that you decide will be our contact person, okay? First things first, let me pass out some information, because this is what I'm going to go over. I don't know if I ran enough copies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you may not be able to, we'll see. If it runs short, then we can see it. Sometimes the office looks at seven board members. They don't realize around the table, there's normally more than seven.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Look at that, just in time.
Okay, so what you have is basically what I'm going to discuss, and any other questions that you may have, I will try to fill those questions. And let's look together, let's look at the first item, and that's establishing a timeline for the search. In establishing the timeline, I must say to you that, well, I guess I got to get up again. But let me, before I pass it out, in establishing the timeline, what we'd like to do, could you help me?
I can.
Thank you, Sam. I know how to solicit.
That's right.
Thank you. In establishing the timeline, if you notice, when you get your sheet, it's a suggested timeline.
Thanks very much.
And it's only suggested so we can have an idea, you can have an idea of where to begin and where to end. And what we try to do, we try to ask you to, first of all, look at the end. Thank you, thank you. And the date, your proposed date for probably finishing this is around the week of December 14th. So, keeping that in mind, let's look back, so let's go to the beginning of the timeline. Today is 9/15. I'm here, glad to be here. This could have been conducted by Skype, but it's much easier when I'm able to be here and your funds allow it. Face-to-face is always better than Skype. So, depending on where we are, what we're doing, I'll go through either your board president, your board chair, or the designee, to say if I need to be here, or if I can do it by phone or something. We spend, and I personally spend your money like I spend my money. So, I understand that no matter how affluent this community is, you're that way because you watch your spending. So, I watch my spending, and I watch whatever I spend with you. Rather than flying up here, I drove four and a half hours. It's okay with me. But I will say to you, I came up last night because I didn't want to get caught, get caught in the traffic and not make it for my meeting at 12 o'clock. But I won't tell you where I stayed, but, and it wasn't in my car, by the way. So, but anyway, let's look at the timeline. Let's look at this. Today's the 15, and you kind of go through it, planning meeting with the board and individual board member interviews. I'm glad I was able to complete six interviews today, and I spoke to Michael a few minutes ago. Michael and I are going to talk within the next two days to complete this interview. As I said to each of you during the interview, the purpose is to help us develop the profile. And the first avenue in that is allowing board members themselves to speak individually about answering the 15 questions about what they'd like to see in a superintendent and those kinds of things. So, we've got those, and I'll get Michael's either tomorrow or the next day. We'll talk. If you look at tomorrow, 16, contact constituents and stakeholders to input meetings on the 5th. Now, there's a meeting on the 5th, the week of the 5th. I'm going to suggest, and you guys can decide as a board, I will constantly remind you that this is your search, okay? So, we're here to work with you. So, if there's a conflict or something we need to do differently, we can do that. So, looking at the second stage, I'll look at the week of October 5th. So, it's meeting with constituent and stakeholder group representatives. I'd like to recommend or suggest only that we change that to the 8th. Middle of the week, people are more flexible in the middle of the week than the beginning of the week. So, if, and again, you guys are going to have to agree on this, and if there's a date that has to be changed, we can, we can talk about and work with that. That is a meeting where you guys will decide who you'd like to be part of the stakeholder groups. I will suggest the kind of community people we have involved in the past. Number one, we involve students, which means we, I would come in during the day and perhaps after lunch, we would get some middle school and some high school student representatives. Normally, board members look at the student government or some other students who are doing well in school, and that become 15, 20 students I'll sit with them. And I ask them basically the same question, but be from student standpoint, who you'd like to see in a new superintendent. Another group we involve are PTOs. We also involve the community stakeholders, whatever community organizations are involved in your schools. Again, you, you guys will select, and you'll make a decision as who you like at those meetings. We also provide, it's the school administration, could be the top-level administration, meaning building administrators, supervisors. In some cases, we've done central office staff. We don't want to leave anybody out. Sometimes, they combine the central office staff with either the administrative team. We also involve the teachers. Could be teacher union representatives. And we also have a group of parents. So, we suggest you do five or six of those meetings. Now, I'm your contact person, and unless we need somebody else, I'd bring somebody else to do it with me. But I'm equipped to do all of them, depending on when we're going to start. Naturally, some couple of meetings will have to take place in the evening, okay? Because you have people who work, or you have parents, you have teachers who teach. Their meetings would normally take place after school is out, maybe three or four o'clock. Also, administrators, they may be four or five o'clock. But we could work out that with you. I'll either be in touch with your contact person or your board president to figure out who you want to be on, who you would like to be part of the stakeholder groups, and we make that happen. Now, we have a couple of weeks to do that, so that is something that should be done ASAP. So, this week, we can decide who those people want to be, okay? The, now, then we talk about determining the input process. Who will be involved, number one, in developing the profile. The stakeholder groups that I mentioned, those groups will be involved in developing the profile. I'll have a series of perhaps 12 questions. Every group will be asked the same question. Then, we will encourage them, as I will encourage you, will have a survey. And this is a copy of the survey that will go, I guess I may have to put you on, since you're not working at night. I bet you put on our staff for a few minutes, huh? Okay. But this, this is the copy of the survey.
Thank you.
Okay, looking at the survey, you will find that there are 33 characteristics.
Oh, these are all-
Do we have enough?
These have people's names on the top.
Who's names on them? Board members?
Yep.
Yeah, I have Michael's.
They want you guys to do them tonight. I thought there was a hole.
I got Janet.
All right. It's Michael's and Janet's.
Mike, you got to do the survey before you do the other thing.
All right.
But that's okay. Thank you, Michael.
Oh, thank you.
This is great. This is like playing cards. Need to change that in a second.
Janet, it's yours.
Oh, I got another one.
You got two?
I got two.
You got two in the same? Can I look at one of them? I don't know. Kim and I both have. Michelle have two.
I got two.
Are these the same questions?
They're the same question, yeah.
Maybe we keep one, give him one.
We're special.
Here's what happened. With that, if you notice, there are 33 questions. Now, you can complete them tonight. You don't have to. You can complete them online. You can say, these are mine. Now, what we want to do, I don't need to know that who did what. I don't need to know that, that the board chair did number one, number five, number 10, or whatever. I don't need to know that. So, I'm suggesting, that's to show you, but I'm suggesting you go online. It's individual, it's yours, but online, you don't have to put your name, but you can. Now, what we're going to ask you, if you notice the top, it says the 33 characteristics, but you should only do 10. Reason being, if each of you, if you do 10, that means you're not going to select the same 10. So, you may come up with 70 different items of who picked number one, number two, number three, and so on. So, we're going to ask each of you to do 10. Now, we're also going to ask the board and the committee to put out information to your community, to say that starting tomorrow or starting tomorrow, this survey will be online. This really helps in the process of developing the profile, okay? It's important that people only do 10, because when you look at these, wow, you say, gee, they're, they're all good. They are. But it's important also that you select only 10. We're going to ask each of you to do it. Like I said, if you want to do it with your name on it, you can get it to me. I'll get it to the office tomorrow. But because I don't need to know who you selected, or the questions that you may want to put on, additional question to ask, I'm suggesting you do it online, okay? Yes, sir.
So, online, that would be your website at the bottom of this? So, online, that would be your website at the bottom of this?
Either on my, our website or tomorrow, it will be on your website.
Okay.
But make sure it's on your website. Okay, and we encourage, as, and I spoke to your board chair, as many people as possible who are involved in your school, those who work in the community, those who live in the community, parents of the kids, your administrators, your teachers, to complete the survey. Because again, this is the focal point that will help us in determining the profile. That, along with the survey questions, along with the questions that I still, and I'm going to ask Mike tomorrow or the next day, questions I ask you today, information that you may send to our office, that's going to help us come up with the profile. Okay? That profile will go on a flyer. And here are some examples of full flyers that we did. Only got a couple, so I can just pass them off.
Well, and what I was going to do after we were talking, is I will take care of contacting the Long Meadow News and the reminder, once we have a link for the survey, to get news out to the community as it will also be on our website. You know, just writing up a little something that, you know, we want the entire community's input. You don't have to have children in the district or currently attending schools, but like Dr. Rush is saying, get anyone who's in the community, whether it be senior citizens, whether it be families without children or families whose children have already been through the system. We do, the more we hear from, the better profile we can create of what qualities we want to see in our next superintendent.
Yes. And those, those flyers that are going around, that's what a profile looks like. It's a double-sided one sheet. It's got information about the school, where you're located, your population and demographics. And then the other side is taught about the characteristics, the things you'd like to see in a superintendent. It's worked over forty years, it's, it's a good profile. And you want, you don't want to say too much, that's why it's only one page. But it helps us and helps you to determine. Once that profile is completed, then we will send a draft to the district. Before it goes out to the public, you guys will vote on it. If you look at the timeline, it says when the draft profile will go out. So if you look at the, on the thirteenth, ten thirteen, we'll get the draft to, to us. And on the thirteenth, of course, we can talk. Now, again, as I was telling your board chair, I don't need to come back for that. We can talk on the phone, which saves you travel money, also saves you hotel or whatever. They probably wouldn't stay overnight coming up that date, but I don't know, it's four and a half hours, depending on, you know, I'm not as young as I used to be, like, like Michael, so I may have to do it differently. But at, at any rate, on the thirteenth, I can have a conversation with your board president to say, this is, we've agreed, the board president can contact each of you and say, listen, you have any issues with the flyer? Okay, once he says everything's okay and you guys have go, then either your district or our district will print the flyer. Now, the printing of the flyer is your responsibility. So if you want us to print the flyer, there would be an expense. But if you have the opportunity and you have the wherewithal to print your own flyer, you can do that.
And just to fill in, Dr. Rush, we've got a regular scheduled school committee meeting for the thirteenth. So we can discuss, vote and approve on it.
Actually.
And I can email you after that meeting, so we can go on for the next day.
Okay. Madam Chair, any questions up to this point, through you?
The constituent meetings with the, with the community members.
Right.
That's in addition to the online survey.
Yes.
Just so that community members are clear, it's not a, a one or the other. You know, we certainly want your input via the survey, because that, I'm assuming, is an easy way for you all to tally and accumulate data. But just because you do the survey doesn't preclude that you can't come to the meeting.
Right, we would like for, we would like for them to attend the meetings because some of the questions are more direct. Now, again, we'll have eight to ten questions and we'll ask them something similar to we ask, that we ask all of you today. But you can hear other people saying, you may have some ideas. You know, so it's important that, sometimes we say it's okay if people cannot make the meetings, but we would love to see people because also it shows us, you know, that the community is involved. Let me, let me be mindful of that. We've had several stakeholder meetings. At some places, we've only had two or three places that are larger than your district. Some places, we've had twenty-five, thirty people. So depending on the night, depending on what's going on in the people's lives, but, and that's why they have the option. We don't want it to be an option, we want everybody to do the survey, but if you can, attend the stakeholder, stakeholder meetings. And I would suggest that at those stakeholder meetings, board members may not want to attend. Because you want people to be honest and upfront. If you've got a board member sitting there and I want to talk about something that I didn't see or whatever, you may not say it. Again, I'm only suggesting because again, I have to be reminded, I have to remind you that this is your search. And we can do it the way you do, we're flexible, we'll do what you want to do.
Russ?
So you mentioned October eighth, potentially for that date. And I just wanted to mention the SEAL authors coming on the eighth.
Right, I was going to say, you know, it's the week of, I've got to check with Diane on the district calendar, what's available. I know we had held some meeting dates, I don't know if we went that far, Diane?
I think we have October seventh, I have public forum listed.
Maybe that's the date that we do, we held. Because before, before we got to you, Dr. Rush, we had, since calendars book up quickly, we had put in a couple tentative dates that we were just holding so that.
We held the first?
So that other groups didn't snap, snag those dates out from us.
And the seventh?
The seventh?
What's that?
The seventh, the first.
And then September twenty-ninth, maybe?
Yeah.
So those public forums were meant for this process?
Yes.
Okay, I was wondering what else were.
So would October seventh work, Dr. Rush?
October seventh will work, what day is?
The Wednesday.
That's a Wednesday, October seventh will work, it will work.
So, can we agree as a, a committee right now that for the stakeholder meetings, it'll be October the seventh?
Yep. I don't know if I'll be present at all.
No, we're not supposed to be present at the stakeholder meetings.
Perfect, because I can't be there.
We were uninvited.
Okay, yeah, you missed that part. Those are the stakeholder meetings. So that will be, we'll organize, and we'll, we'll decide what groups meet, but that'll definitely be an evening where parents and community members can come out
Right.
and speak with Dr. Rush about what they want to see in the next superintendent.
Now, we will have organized questions and we'll ask each group the same question. And we'll develop a, a list so we'll know who's coming. And we like to have people to sign this, or get an idea, you know, the parents, the PTO.
And, and Michael, you had missed, with having it being a, with wanting to talk to the stakeholders without school committee members present, they'll tend to be more open. So, Liz?
I just wondered, are we having forums or is this considered a forum?
This would be considered the forum. We, we didn't know what to call it when we were holding it on the calendar, so we just had said public forum.
We call it stakeholder meetings.
And they, their terminology is stakeholder meeting, ours was public forum, but one in the same.
So when, when these people come, what about, it seemed like you were saying was more organized, like we want people from PTO, we want people. Were we not also going to have a general, like, parents forum as well? Because we could have, you know, a lot of parents come.
That could be one of them too. What I was saying, you could, and we could do whatever, again, this is your search. If you said to me, we'd like to have three parent forums to get all of our parents. You know, then we'll make that happen. What I do suggest is you have the parent meetings after school. And you may pick an evening, from five-thirty to seven, or seven-thirty to nine, or whatever. But you, you don't want it to go on all night, so you want to say, okay, we're going to have a, a, a parent forum and anybody else. Could be a general forum for those people who can make their regular meetings, you know, to come in and we just talk about, I'll ask the same questions. I'll, again, I'll go over the survey again and just complete the survey and we just talk to them, yes. Okay?
And that way we'll work on scheduling others during that day. Administration.
Students.
Students, teachers, maybe right after school, so that it's not everybody at that one evening meeting.
Right.
But if, say a teacher couldn't make it after school but really wanted to attend, they could come that evening.
Right, so we're having two.
He'll have different meetings throughout the day. But there will be one parent opportunity in the evening.
Okay.
Right. Or general public, depending on what you guys decide, you know, maybe say, community people, those who could not make the meeting during the day. But some meetings you're going to have just for staff. And you don't want parents at your staff meeting with your principals or with your teachers or central administration.
Yeah.
So it's safe to say?
Are we going to have a, um, a superintendent search committee made up of constituents of a certain size, let's say fifteen people who are going, I mean, we have an applicant, as an example, I'm not indicating any favoritism. An applicant is asking to be on the committee. Is there going to be such a committee? And I, I, if, if I'm hearing you correctly, Doctor, you're saying we make the decision.
Right.
It's important, so at what point in time are all these constituents and interest groups going to?
Okay, here's, here's what. Okay, and, and good question. The stakeholder meetings now will be October seventh. Okay? The, and when I go down the profile, we're going to get to that part, okay? Then we're going to go over that. But to basically answer your question, the board will have a decision to make. And I can suggest how you may want to do it. But the board will decide if they're going to have a committee, a search committee. They can decide, or you guys will decide how far in the process, if you decide to have a committee. The board may decide that we're going to be the search committee because ultimately, we got to be responsible and make the final determination. Okay? That is something that you guys need to discuss, either tonight or at one of your meetings. It doesn't have to be tonight, but you can do it tonight. But you're going to discuss whether you want to have a, a, a search committee, how involved the search committee could be. Okay? And, and I'll just say that we've had it, we've done it both ways. Again, we say it's your search. Some boards decide for several reasons, they may not want a search committee. And part of the reason being is that this is a very, very, very difficult decision you guys have to make. And hopefully you're going to get somebody you're going to live with for a while. And the people that we look at or that we bring to the table, those folk have jobs. And sometimes you guys are bound by law. Community members are not. So sometimes they may want to know about, want to know more about the application, the applicant than you know. So we don't want any breaches of finding out the confidential, or the fact that this is confidential for the candidates. Because we have had it happen, by the way, where we got down to the finalists and a community member who had a phone number or had where that person was from, they contacted the board or contacted people in there, got back to the candidate, the candidate dropped out. The fastest way for you to lose somebody who's interested is to get back to their district or go on Google and tell your friends and all of a sudden, it's in the newspaper. Okay? So we, we don't recommend, we suggest. Depending on the makeup of your Board of Education, the makeup of your community, the kind of input you want them to have, then you decide on whether you want to have a search committee or not. Whether you have one or not, you're going to get some people going to say one or the other. That happens in every district we go on. Some people say, you know, we want a search committee, some people say we don't. If you say we don't, then some people are going to really be uptight. You say we do, it's going to work both ways. But you guys, the seven of you, will have to live with whatever decision you make. And we will follow your lead in terms of how you'd like to do that process. Okay? But it's very, very important. And we've been in one district for almost a year because information got out. So it's hard to get people to come back if they think you're going to reveal where they are, what they're doing. Now, we do tell the candidates, if you're one of the finalists, we suggest that you tell your board president and he or she may tell the board committee. Because if you're one of the finalists, then it's, then it's open season. They want to know who, who you are or about you, people are going to Google you anyway. So we said wait for that process. But oftentimes it happens before that process and you lose good candidates. So that's very critical that the seven of you make those decisions based on what you want for the kids. Okay, so that's, I have to continually reinforce that because it has happened before. Where it hasn't happened, when boards follow my lead and they make sure that everything is confidential. Everything about the process that can be confidential is confidential.
Could I just follow up on that? If we, well, we're going to go ahead and have constituent and stakeholder groups, people are going to invite people.
Exactly, yes.
I don't want to leave the impression that we're not going to.
Right, right, that's, that's the difference, yes.
My concern is at what point do we turn it over to a superintendent search committee or this committee says, okay, we'll take it from here?
Okay, if you look down on the, on the, if you look at the, the timeline and look at the twentieth, I'm, I'm sorry, December two. Okay? That mainly says where you're going to go after the deadline closes. For the deadline for application is the sixteenth of, sixteenth of November. On the second, that's when we're going to start talking. Before that, shortly before that, I would say before Thanksgiving holiday, you need to decide what you're going to do. Are you going to have a search committee or are you going to be the search committee yourselves? And I need to suggest that you really think long and hard about how you want that to take place. Okay, I know that I talked to individual board members today and I mentioned one or two things. You can have a search committee, but you don't have to. Okay? But you guys have to figure out where you are as a group to do this. Okay? Search committees can be controlled, can be controlled. If I'm dealing with a search committee, there's some do's and don'ts. But I can't control if somebody sneaks an application or uses a phone and takes a picture of something and calls somebody. I have no control over that. Even though we can redact names. Okay? I mean, I, I mean, the addresses and phone numbers, but you know as well as I know. If you give a person's name and their position, you can Google them, Twitter them, or go someplace and find out who that person is. It was easier back in the day. But with technology now, boy, you know, and we've seen this over the last forty years. I've been with rating associates like almost eight years and I've seen a difference in eight years. So.
Kim, did you have a question?
Well, I guess my, one of my, two. You're, you're recommending that on this October seventh forum stakeholder group meeting, that we not be there so that they can speak.
I'm only, I'm only suggesting, yes.
You're suggesting, sorry.
Right, it's okay.
So that they can speak openly. I know that people will ask if it's going to be public, if it's going to be on camera. Is it, do you, so it, by us not being there, are you also suggesting that it not be videoed or televised?
Depending on what your policies are. I don't want to go, we've gone to, for an example, in Florida, when we had these in Florida because of the sunshine laws, you know, even the stakeholder meetings had to be televised. Okay? They held on to the case, but they had to be televised. Okay? Massachusetts law, I don't think so. But you have to make a decision. Because again, if people know they're being televised, they may or may not tell.
They do.
To speak freely or openly because of that.
That's something we should probably decide as a board.
Right, we'll need to decide that.
Um, and then, so it's good, it's safe to assume right now so far in our conversations that October seventh will be our first sort of stakeholder open forum
Right.
for probably parents at night. And during the day, you'll try and communicate or touch base and have a similar one, maybe after school before the parent one with maybe teachers that can make it. And, because I know that we, we'd like to have, I, I know I personally would like to have, you know, a parent forum, an administration forum, and a, an opportunity for the teachers to speak as well, but in different, not with parents around.
And those forums are very important. And, and, and I can suggest that during the day, and I would say after lunch, or whenever the kids' lunch is over, like one o'clock, one-thirty, bring the students together, of course with their, with their reps, teacher reps or classroom teachers or whatever. And just ask the questions to students, I enjoy really meeting, hearing from the students. Then you can say shortly after that, at three, three-thirty, depending on when school is out, so everybody can come, you can have teacher representatives. Or you can have the teacher representatives select representatives from each school. Okay? Then you could say. Okay, then you could say you may have the community. Or, I mean, I can go as long as you want to, if you, if, if I need to go from twelve thirty to nine thirty, I do that.
Could be possible, that's.
Right, right, because again, see, by, by me doing this myself and not bringing another person, if they come from someplace else, you know, that may be another, uh, lodging expense, maybe a food expense, and it may be travel expense.
Yep.
But I'm not gonna fly up here, so I'm not gonna pay two, three hundred dollars for a flight or have you guys do that. But if it gets too big, then I would say I need to bring somebody, somebody else who may be from Connecticut or close to here who could drive you. But again, I remind you that if you want us to do seven, eight groups, let us know, we can work that out, work with you guys. Start it early, for example, you may wanna do the, uh, do the, uh, central office staff. You can say central office staff, let's do an hour, half hour, and bring ten and bring the other ten and have it someplace in here so we can just solve, cause they need to be involved too.
Yep.
But the board will decide who, who you'd like to be involved in the stakeholder meetings.
Okay, and then we're somewhere in between October seventh and the Thanksgiving deadline of us deciding on a search committee, we'll have a couple other of these, um, stakeholder group forums.
If, if, if need be, if, if I come on the seventh and, and, and you decide or another group or two groups decide that they went, they did not participate, you guys contact me and I'll come again. You know, or if we can't fit them all in, I could stay two days and do the students during the day. You know, but most of these folk you want there are the adults, they can't come until evening, so we may have to do two evenings.
Well, I'm just thinking parents, you know, like October seventh might not be, like, I know when we did some of our other kind of big things going on in the district, not quite as big as this, um, but we've, we've ho- held I think two or three public forums to try and be able to get to hear from everyone, and so I just was thinking that we might be doing something similar here.
If, if you wanna do two forums for parents, that's, that's fine, if you wanna do one early afternoon and late evening so you can get a cross-section of parents, again, I, I'll do whatever you guys.
I'm thinking, hold on just a second, Russ, but Kim, the, the purpose of the, the stakeholder meetings and the surveys are to get the characteristics of what we wanna see.
As soon as possible.
Okay.
So doing another forum, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Doctor Rush, doing an, another stakeholder meeting after the flyer is created.
Is not, doesn't, doesn't do any good.
Is not going to be helpful.
Okay. So maybe.
Right. So if you decide to do one on the seventh and one on the eighth, I, I suggest back-to-back because after the evenings, you know, it's easier for me and it's, and it's cost efficient for you to do them back-to-back. So if you, some people mention you have something on the eighth, you may wanna do a forum on the seventh and the eighth. Then I know that I'm up here for two or three days.
Number us?
Well, what I was, so first of all, I like everything you've said so far. And your timeline, we actually.
How about that, Mike, is that all right?
I think it's good.
See, he's, he's a politician.
I told you.
We voted on a timeline, your timeline matches basically what we voted on already. So what I was thinking though is based on PTO attendance, that maybe if we did the seventh would be a nighttime parent meeting and then we have you stay over on Friday morning, we do like a nine o'clock parent meeting. So we have the nighttime and the morning.
But that's two nights.
The Thursday, you wanna do it?
No, the eighth wouldn't be a night, it would just be the.
Oh, you do it the morning of the eighth.
Yeah, he comes on the seventh, meets with all the other constituent groups, does the parents at night. Then the eighth in the morning, which doesn't conflict the seal.
Another parent group, just in case.
Do another parent group that morning.
We did a parent group.
Is there noth- is there nothing on the seventh on our district calendar, like that's?
Right, that's why we had.
Yeah, I just wanna like, and during the afternoons for the admin and everyone, that's kind of an open day too.
We can do like.
So that might be a, a nice compromise for us is to, for parents who can't attend an evening meeting, offer an alternative the following morning.
That's, that's fine.
If you're open to staying over.
Yes.
And the other comment I'd make about what Kim just said is I, I would agree that I don't, I wouldn't wanna videotape it and I, I don't know that it's a good idea for us to be there either, I kinda like to just see what the community has to say without us.
Right.
Because we're gonna find out eventually, you know, what the profile.
You're never gonna find out who said what, but you'll find out what was said.
Yeah.
You know, but we don't, we don't wanna do names.
No, and I, and that's, and that's what I meant, you know, we, I mean, I, I agree with you on that, I, I mean, I think that the community members who attend should feel free to express what they, you know, think without having us being defensive sitting in the room.
So, yeah, I know that we'll get some people that will wanna televised cause they can't make it, so we'll have to make sure that.
Right, so.
Well, what they will get is, they're gonna see the outcome of all of this.
Right.
You know, they just won't see individual comments, but they're gonna see the overall results.
Yeah. The results. So what I'm hearing from the committee right now is that there's consensus about not broadcasting the stakeholder meetings, is that fair to say?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Unless we get some sort of torrent of emails saying that they want it to televised, I don't think we, we should do it.
Okay, but I think, you know, what we've discussed so far and the rationale for not recording them and broadcasting them, I, I would hope community members would understand, we want people to be able to speak freely, say what's on their mind, share with Doctor Rush without us present, but like you had pointed out, Kim, is if they, if people know that they're gonna be recorded, again, they may not speak freely. So as of right now, we have consensus not to video and broadcast, correct?
But we are gonna advertise the existence of these meetings.
Oh, absolutely, John, we will advertise the heck out of, out of that these meetings are taking place. Okay, so we've at least agreed no videoing.
And I like the, you know, now, the, the morning one that you suggest.
I like that idea as well.
Cause even just like the senior citizens that can't make it at night.
Good point.
Will be able to come the next day.
Okay.
Okay.
And maybe we do it someplace like Greenwood.
Oh, supply busing.
You talked to Tom about busing.
You know, what people are, are, that sometimes, sometimes, uh, boards decide that they wanna go to different places, different schools, and that's okay, you know, just give, give myself and the people enough time to go from one area to the next.
William, one place to another, okay.
Yeah.
Holding everything at Williams.
All right, did we want, as, as, before we go any further, Doctor Rush, as a board, do we want to determine what groups we want to have Doctor Rush meet with as stakeholder groups at this point? Or do you wish to decide those groups later?
Well, we could do it now. We could do it now.
Okay, so, a- and, and let me, before you go on with that.
No problem, go right ahead.
Um, so, right now, we've agreed, or we have consensus on the community in the evening and in the morning, the evening of the seventh and the morning of the eighth. In terms of students, are people interested in having groups of students meet with Doctor Rush?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think if he, if he recommends that.
Okay.
What, do you mind if I ask, what are the age groups of the students that normally meet?
We, we suggest middle and high school.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
And do, we look to the, um, principals to give us suggestions as to the students that we?
I would think so.
They know they're students, right.
And with regard to the middle and the high school, is it one meeting or is it two separate meetings?
Uh, one meeting, because again, the purpose is for the younger teenagers or the middle school to learn. Some of them will ask questions, but they also learn from their older siblings that they're gonna be there one day. So there's opportunity, now, we hope that you won't have to do this again. Those kids, well, you have, your middle school is a seven and eight or six, seven, eight?
Six, seven, eight.
Six, seven, eight, so those sixth graders will have to go through this again when they're eleven to twelfth graders, that is your hope.
I'm with you.
Right?
I'm with you.
Yes.
So that would be something then we would have to need to schedule after-school hours, um.
Now, what we, what we've done, we've scheduled them before buses. Uh, for example, if school's out at the, uh, middle school, I don't know, if it's two o'clock or one thirty, what, what we've done before, scheduled right after lunch. And we bring either the middle school kids over to the high school or vice versa, whatever, but we try this because they, they, they're gonna have their lunch and I think they'll, it'd be good for them to have input. And I don't know if it's happened before, but we certainly, and you'd be surprised at the kinds of answers you get from students.
Oh, absolutely, I'm just thinking with the staggered dismissal times, how that would work.
Look, tech, I mean, you could do it in the middle of the day.
And how we transport them, cause we've got two middle schools and the one high school.
What time are they out?
High school is out at two fifteen, middle school is out at two fifty.
Wow. I mean, I don't, I don't mind doing separate meetings.
Okay.
If, if, if the, if the, uh, high school could do it after lunch.
Okay.
And then may, maybe the morning, as Russell mentioned, I could do one of the schools.
Oh, that's a, a good idea.
You know, after meeting with the parents for an hour.
And then.
Don't lose parent time, you know, or then use, maybe use some parent time on the seventh, dur- during the day.
Or after the parent time to do a group of middle school students.
After parent on the eight or whatever, we can do some middle school, but we can work that out. You guys talk about it and I'll just, I'm flexible enough to do what I need to do.
Okay.
Can you walk back and forth, the schools aren't that far apart, are they? Or Williams, they could not, Williams. Oh, Glenbrook, I was thinking Williams to hear, sorry.
Williams, they could walk here like in two minutes.
That's what I, yeah, sorry.
Okay, so, we'll work out the details of students, but we do wanna have Doctor Rush meet with students. Um, school administration, a- and do we want to combine central office with admin? Cause I know for your admin meetings, you combine, correct?
Right, and if it's a Wednesday morning, then we typically meet anyway, so.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
We are scheduled for the seventh.
And what time do you start?
Eight o'clock.
Eight AM.
We've gotta get poor Doctor Rush here.
Four-hour drive.
What was that?
With your four-hour drive, you wanna be here.
No, 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 listen.
Well, why don't you do your admin meeting and then?
No, I'm gonna, listen, I am not gonna drive up to get it eight o'clock in the morning after leaving for the.
He'll be driving up to night four.
No, I'll come up, thank you, thank you, I'll drive up to night four.
You got that good deal on that hotel.
Oh, see how you are, yes.
Okay, so admin generally meets Wednesday, is it?
Eight, at ten.
So you could put that on your agenda? Okay, um.
How much time do you require?
We, we normally do an hour.
An hour?
Hmm.
Okay, and then teachers, I'm assuming we're all in agreement on having him meet with teachers. And that again would be right after school, so that would be the three, what time do you normally have this, three fifteen, three thirty?
Three fifteen.
What about your elementary school, when are they out, what time are they out?
Two forty-five.
They dismiss at two forty-five.
Okay, so a three fifteen meeting should, should get everybody here.
Three fifteen.
So we have the admin team and upper administration, we have the students, we have the teachers, we have the community members, um, at two different times. Is there any other group that you all can think of that you would like to see offered a chance to meet with Doctor Rush?
Well, do we wanna do like, um, so we did students, we did teachers, we did admin, we did community. Is there any particular slight, you know, sort of constituency of that community we wanna sort of highlight? Whether it be seniors or PTOs or?
We did talk PTOs.
We did, I, I just hate to start breaking it down, personally, I hate to start breaking it down into such small populations because to try to get all the PTOs together, those would be the same people who would be coming to the community.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Or the parents.
Pardon?
Parents.
Parents. Um, you know, seniors are more than welcome, you know, and, and we will definitely advertise and put that out there, more than welcome to come to any of the community meetings.
Right.
I don't know.
What do we do with town officials, are they getting a survey like we get?
The town officials.
Oh, what about, yeah, what about, um, general government department heads, cause you know Stephen Crane wants in on this.
There, there's the survey online and there are the meetings in the evening.
Yeah, I mean, he can come to the community forum.
Yeah.
I mean, we could certainly arrange for something, you know, on that Wednesday in between admin and teachers to put it out there for general government.
I mean, the community section would be open to everybody anyway, but.
Right.
Well, it's.
They're part of the community, they read the paper, they can come on their own, I wouldn't invite them.
Right. Okay.
To be frank.
Well, I mean, we have the time after the ninety, after the ten, the eighth evening and the eighth too, he could have a, maybe have a lunch with them or something.
Right, if, if need be, so right now, we're comfortable with the groups who we've selected?
Yeah.
Sure.
Sure.
Nobody else wants to add anybody?
No, I think, uh, the only thing I would say is on the government officials or Stephen Crane or anybody, if, if, if they contact, you know, you or whoever the point person is and want, like, that's a, an interview, just private, then I think, you know, that.
A special.
Not all, and I, I'm quite honestly, I don't think that that's, you know, too much to ask either because you think about like the fire chief, the police chief, the DPW director, the town manager, all have to work with the superintendent on, on myriad of issues.
Right, so perhaps just.
Yeah, that's.
Maybe offering them.
Really invite, invite all of them?
Why don't we just call?
Why not ask them what, you know, why not involve them a little bit?
No, Mr. Foster and ask, if you want some time with our consultant, we can arrange it.
All right, so I will contact Mr. Crane and Mr. Foster to see if they're, they would like time, that we could put them in the agenda. If there's interest, we will, and if there's not, we won't, is that fair enough?
Yeah, cause you're here all day anyway, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Might as well use your time.
Exactly.
Okay.
I think it's harder for some of them to speak as freely in a, in a large meeting as, you know, so that's why they might want an individual.
Right, and offering them that, you know, courtesy of, like you said, Michael, since they all do work closely.
Right.
I mean, that's, I mean, and quite honestly, I mean, it's, it's a community-wide search and, you know, this is the biggest department and we have the largest budget and we demand a lot of the other departments that, not to say that they necessarily deserve to be part of the decision-making process, but, you know, I mean, they're stakeholders too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, before we rush into this, we weren't invited to participate in the selection of the town manager. And we're the largest budget item in, in the town, I mean, you know, if you're gonna follow that logic.
But I, I don't.
I really don't see the need for, I mean, if they wanna come to a, a forum like anyone else, let them.
I think it's in, in the, I, I think I agree with.
But it's, it's a question of authority and who, we're setting this up, we're the ones who'll take the flak as to whether it was representative or not. And inviting the people in the establishment is, is not my idea of reaching out to the public. Reaching out to the public is the parents and taxpayers and all kinds of people.
Yeah, but when you're doing that already, what, I mean, why not just continue to grow up a tent, I mean, if it's a big tent?
Well, the thing is, we're not, we're not looking at, um, this is basically Doctor Rush gathering data for us. He's gonna bring it to us, we're gonna look at that data, we may ignore a lot of it. But it's simply more data, it's not, I, I don't, I totally agree that the town should not be involved in actually making the selection or having any, you know, we don't have influence on who the police chief is, you know, they don't have influence on who the superintendent is. But hearing what their input is as far as the characteristics they'd like, I'm okay with that far. Beyond that, I'd say it really is our decision, it's our department, but, but I don't mind, I'd like to hear what their characteristics are, that's it.
And that's what this is for, you wanna know what we're.
As many people as possible, uh, they're part of your township, they either work here or live here. So we wanna get as many people as possible of, of, again, and one way of the doing, of doing it is say, listen, we have a survey. We would really like for you to participate in the survey. We also say we have a community forum, we have a forum that we're gonna invite parents and seniors, you're welcome to come to that forum. Uh, if there are five or six people that, that the time permits, as you said, I'm gonna be holiday anyway. So the eight o'clock meeting, and there's a nine thirty meeting someplace that I'm not meeting with administrators or whatever, I don't mind doing that. You know, I, I think the more the merrier, and some, sometimes even though those are town officials or government officials, you know, the, the relationship between the board and the town, you know, based on my surveys with all of you, you know, we need to deal with that positively, so that can only help, it can't hurt. But again, even if you decide to just offer them, you know, please do online and complete the survey.
And like I said, I'm more than happy to reach out to both Stephen and to Richard, letting them know the survey's available, but also letting them know that you will be here and, you know, mid-morning, there's a time slot if they would like to.
That's fine.
Get into more detail, but I, I, you know, like Russ and, and Kim have said, it's just.
It's more data points.
We're wanting characteristics, we wanna know what people in the community want.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's not anything more than that, so.
And I think it's worth mentioning, or worth, worthly saying, just because they haven't included us all the time, doesn't mean that we have to follow that sort of, we don't have to subscribe to the same notion that we don't have to be inclusive of them.
That's true.
I mean, that's the reason we have the relationship we have is because we do follow that, we do subscribe to that notion more often than not.
We're reaching out. Right. We can reach.
Exactly.
Whether they accept or not, totally different story, but we can reach.
That's on them, yeah. I'm with you.
All right, so moving forward, Doctor Rush, so we've gotten the constituents, we know that we're not gonna videotape. You're getting, after you meet with everybody, you're getting a promotional flyer and then we'll be able to discuss that and vote on it at our meeting on October thirteenth. So once that flyer is printed, you wanna continue on?
Yeah, once the flyers were printed, uh, presented and you guys approve it, then. then our job is to get information out there, which would take about five weeks to make sure that all of our associates contact our database. Advertise, and we gotta talk about advertisement, what you wanna advertise in a moment, because there are five weeks from the opening, the closing date, and the opening, the closing of the application date is the sixteenth of, of November. So, between that time, five weeks, we want to get to as many people as possible, we get to our people. We will decide in a few minutes where we'd like to advertise, because there are costs associated with advertising, depending on where you advertise. And so, that's where we are now. Uh, so let's talk about advertising.
Mark, he's got a job for you.
Wake up there, Mark.
No, he, he's working. I saw him, I can vouch for him.
Okay.
Here we go. While you're looking at that, you, you, you guys want to print the flyer or you want us to print the flyer?
I don't know what capabilities we have, Diane.
How many, how many flyers?
They, they depending, you're gonna, you're gonna, it's gonna be online.
Yeah.
And you're gonna have a number of flyers because again, you know, we, we go to different places, we'd be going to, uh, I'll be going to a couple of conventions, uh, not on you, by the way, on us, that we can get information out.
So, how many, how many do you typically recommend printing?
Probably, cause you wanna get somewhere on the community, probably a hundred fifty, two hundred.
Okay, I mean, we'd probably go to Staples or something, right?
Mm-hmm.
You can print a hundred and fifty of them off of our color printer, can't you?
Yeah.
What are you doing there?
Okay.
That's what, that's what.
So, what, what, but make sure to include, when we do the draft flyer, you guys have to approve it. You know, and approve for everything, grammatical errors, everything, because the last thing you want to do is to have a flyer go out and you got school misspelled. You know, just, just an example that we had to pull a couple because they decided they were gonna do it, they did it. But let us see it before you complete because it would reflect negatively on us, because it's gonna go on our website. So, we gotta work together on that, so. October twelve thirteen, we work together on that. Okay, once that's completed, then, uh, we need to talk about, let me, let, let me just go, before I go to the advertising, let me just talk about what you guys need to do. You need to make a decision on who's gonna be involved in the interview process. You have to decide if you want to have a search committee. If you're gonna have a search committee, who should be on that committee? If you decide that the board's gonna be the search committee, because ultimately you make the decision, you have to decide that. Again, as I mentioned before, that's a tough decision, because everybody wants to be involved in who the next person is. Uh, you can say to them, we are involving because we do, this is how we're doing the stakeholder meetings, and some people wanna sit at the table. I'm telling you, you risk both ways, okay? Not saying you sit and do it, but it's risky when you have a district like yours. First of all, this is an affluent district. So, it's not gonna be easy as getting somebody that comes from Springfield. A Springfield-like district as opposed to Long Meadow-like district. You know, and that's just, that's the way education is. People say that it's easier if, if I'm in the middle. But if I'm already on top, where do I go? So, what, what, we don't want anybody to jeopardize the process in terms of getting names out there and they're not supposed to have them out there. Because, believe me, people will back out if their names are show up here and they're just put an application in. So, that, that's critical, but that's a decision that you guys have to make. You don't have to make it now, but I think you need to make it at your thirteenth meeting.
The October thirteenth?
October thirteenth meeting, you need to make that, so we, we'll, we'll know when the deadline closes, we know exactly who's gonna be involved. Because you don't have to, if you decide to have a committee, you don't have to have a committee before that. However, if you're gonna have a committee, people need to know the deadline, all of the, uh, the dates, that are important. Because you want a committee of nine, eleven, thirteen, whatever, how many people you decide to have, you wanna make sure that they all can make the meeting. Okay?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, are any of these costs already included in the contract we have with you?
Which costs are we, are we referring to?
Uh, 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 the pink sheet here.
The advertising.
Oh, we, we, okay.
Did, uh, does our fee with you have any?
No, the, these are your costs. Advertising is totally up to you. Now, what we can do, we suggest where you may wanna advertise, where people look. I'm wondering why everybody's looking up and I don't see it.
No, 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 I was asking if I can erase what's up there.
Now you can, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because I was gonna put some options of what we discussed about the search committee options while you're talking.
Okay, good, okay. I, I didn't thought, I thought maybe I did something wrong.
No, you didn't do anything wrong, I just want, I asked permission, cause I don't wanna put this all back up.
Okay, but, uh, what I would sus- I can suggest where you may wanna advertise. Okay, if you look at where you should advertise, educators look, first of all, recommended array, we look at AASA. Uh, it's not, it's very inexpensive, run for thirty days, sixty days and ninety days. So, AASA, almost every superintendent in the country belongs to AASA, which is a good place to advertise. The other place to advertise is Education Week. Educators look at Education Week. Superintendents look at Education Week, so that's a good place to advertise. Look at the cost for what you wanna gain, you make a decision. You guys have to choo- and I suggest, you know, if you decide this on the thirteenth, you don't have to decide tonight, but if you decide this by the thirteenth, uh, where you wanna advertise is up to you. If you look down the line, all the places you could possibly advertise, uh, National School of Schools, superintendents, A, NASS, free advertisement. Okay, Massachusetts School Board Association, free job listings, you can do that, Education America Network, one ninety-nine. So, if you look down the list of places you can advertise and how long you wanna advertise, when you say thirty days, uh, you're talking about advertising five weeks. So, if you do no more, and I wouldn't do more than thirty days, because again, it's from, from the, uh, from the sixteenth through from the fourteen through the sixteen, so you got about five weeks that you wanna advertise, so thirty days will do that.
Would you recommend the Boston Globe or the Springfield Republican?
I, yes, I would recognize, I would recommend State. State, even though you're doing a national search.
Yeah.
See, some of these, some of these folk will look at the, on, on the website, and you may get people who lived here and may wanna come back.
Right.
Okay, and, and people think about this when you do a national search. Somebody may be in Albuquerque or California, but from Massachusetts, but I'm ready to come back home, or from Long Meadow, I wanna come back. So, I think it's important to, to all, and I think your home paper is always important to have, in the Springfield, whatever, and the Boston Globe. Because if people are looking to come to the, uh, northeast, they're gonna look at those papers anyway, or they go on, go online. But remember, they're not just gonna look at the newspaper, they're gonna look at their online advertisement.
Yeah, would, would the New York Times be on your list?
Uh, not really.
Why not?
O- only because it's, it's a paper that a lot of, a lot of educators don't look in because it's too much information. Okay, uh, if you do, that's why I would recommend, I'll suggest Education Week. That's a magazine that's geared towards educators and for principals and, and superintendents, because they look at it all the time.
It's the number one place people look.
Pardon?
It's the number one place.
Yes, it's the number one place, and we always strongly suggest that you do Education Week. So, you guys can decide where you wanna advertise. Again, I don't think you need to do it tonight, you need to think about it, but at your meeting on the eighteenth, I mean, on the, on the thirteenth, you make those other decisions, I think you need to look at that.
So, do we need to get, um, advertising costs for the Boston Globe and Springfield papers as well?
Yeah, if you're gonna do, I would get advertising costs for those magazines, that's, yes.
Oh, probably too late for Boston magazine.
Russ?
So, if we send out advertisements through Mass Association of School Superintendents, the principal organizations, association of principals, and administrators, we're gonna get kinda sitting administrators in Massachusetts. So, the, the Globe and some of the other newspapers, I think we should think about who we're attracting with that paper. And it really is gonna come down to, are we really doing a national search or not? Same thing with Education Weekly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because the people in this state are gonna get it through the free websites essentially.
Mm-hmm.
And I, and I go to a lot of meetings where they just have stacks of these, you know, as you know, they come in and they have all the different openings, anybody that's looking. So, they're gonna see our opening kind of automatically, um, the people in this state. The real question is, are we gonna spend more money to also look kind of outside the state? And, and I don't know the answer to that, but.
And, and again, I, I agree with you. If, if those advertisements are free or inexpensive, I look at it, but look at your total cost. It's a national search, so again, you're looking at people in state and out of state, in district, ev- everywhere, just remember this, this is a national search. Uh, so whether you go into Vermont newspaper or Maine or California, uh, people are gonna see this because they're gonna go on a, readily go on a website for AASA. The job postings, what do you have out there? They're gonna look at that. They're gonna look at Education Week constantly, what do you have out there? But it depends on how much you think you wanna spend and total advertising cost.
I think one difference is Edweek comes to your desk every week and it's a quick look-through to see what's going on.
Right.
Whereas the others, you have to go to the website and, uh, in, in the community like Long Meadow, I think people would be attracted if they knew it was open. I think you'd reach a far greater market by using Edweek, even though it's expensive.
Question, can we, um, can we email the flyer that we make to every district in Massachusetts?
Are you asking me or? Yeah, you know, if, if, if there's somebody.
Superintendent.
If there's somebody you know you wanna attract, you know, I don't, I don't know if I would send to every district, because again, it's almost like, you know, they're stealing our person. But I think when you push it out, push it out there to newspapers, then if people from another district, if they're interested, they, they're gonna say, if they're interested, they're gonna contact us. By the way, please, if anybody's asking, they need to contact us. Not the district, not any of you guys. If somebody happens to call you, tell them they need to call Ray and Associates. Because that's where you guys can get in a lot of trouble, because, you know, this board member told me I need to apply. As I said to each of you, if you, if you have somebody you'd like to recommend, get them to me, or when you go online, do your, 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 uh, survey, put their name on there. We will get the name, and I promise you, we will contact those people, but we'll say to them, they need to go through the same rigorous process as anyone else. Okay, so we ask everybody that. It's okay if you have in-house people apply, it's a national search, but if you have in-house people, that's, we have no problem with that. But we say everybody who applied, they need to apply through us and go through the same background check, we vet every candidate. We do extensive background checks, make sure, because we don't wanna embarrass, we, we don't want to be embarrassed and we don't want you to be embarrassed. So, we make sure that the people we bring to you don't have issues that you'd have to worry about. Okay, moving on down. Uh, so that's the flight, that's, that's the advertising, you decide on where you wanna advertise.
Oh, I'm sorry, Russ.
Uh, so this is a question from Marie. So, I didn't realize this, but if we send something to MASSS or MASC, it doesn't come to you as a superintendent, it's just posted on their website?
MASC does, MASSS does not.
Okay. So, if we were gonna try and nail this down now, is your recommendation that we do those websites and Education Week?
Yes.
Is that really the?
Yes.
Is that?
Yes, I, I agree.
As much as we can get done now.
Education Week, definitely.
And maybe, and you're also saying AASA, that website?
AASA, because those are websites that will go and people look on a website and say, what's, what's out there nationally? Yes. And, and I would also look at school boards. I don't know what they charge, school boards, depending on what they charge.
They're free.
Okay, I would do school boards. Even though the convention's not till April, people look on school boards, national school boards.
NSBA, gotcha, okay.
You know?
Yep.
So, would we agree to do that, or you wanna think more about the newspapers or whatever?
I'm fine with, you know, the, the proposal of doing the MASC, everything that we've discussed, including the Education Weekly. Um, you know, with, I, I think that's what you were saying.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm fine with moving forward with that. I, I don't know about the newspapers, if that would attract anybody differently, a- any different pool of applicant than who.
People look at, if they're looking for a job, um, I'm not as familiar with Springfield, what the market is there.
But like the, the circulation's not huge.
Everybody around here already knows. But the Globe is expensive and it's.
I know, I was just trying to find the, the cost, I see the specs, but I can't find the cost.
It's expensive.
See if it's expensive, you, you know, you, you, you're going through the plate papers that you need to go to, so that's why I was asking, look at the cost of the Globe. I don't know what it is, but.
But my question is about the Globe, I mean, I, I don't necessarily, I, I don't. If we're going to Education Week and we're going to AASA, do we need the Globe?
I guess that was my question.
Well, no, I agree, uh.
Not necessarily.
I don't think so.
Earlier was correct. It's redundant. I just threw it out to see if that was, there is a constituency that reads the Globe. And the Globe, and I don't, I'm not working for the Globe, but it's read in New Hampshire, it's read up to Portland, Maine, throughout Rhode Island, so you're getting a chunk of people who aren't gonna be part of the professional network.
But like we, the type of person.
But, you know, we're gonna, a bunch of us are gonna be at the November meeting on the Cape. Are we gonna be able to advertise? We didn't hire them for the search, are we able to?
Well, we didn't hire them, they didn't bid.
They didn't apply.
I thought they did though.
No, no.
Excuse me.
So, I think the answer to your question is yes, we can advertise there.
We have a booth.
Okay.
Alright, so I think that we're in agreement on AASA, Education Weekly, and then the free sites. Is that, am I correct in saying that?
Yep.
Michelle?
Yeah.
Michael, we're good with that assertion of AASA, Education Weekly, and then all of the?
All the free ones?
All the free ones.
Yeah, I mean, because we can always decide.
If we wanna add something.
Something, you know, it's, you know, if it's, if we're talking about a five-week period and we're advertising for thirty days, we've got some good, some good flexibility in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Moving along, Dr. Rush.
Okay.
See, we're just making decisions for you left and right.
Fine, you guys are good. I mean, like I said, I've seen boards that nobody can make a decision, or they voted down.
You should visit our select court sometime.
Pardon me?
Nothing, no?
I, I, I know you, listen, you're boarding like every other board, I noticed some decisions that you guys, you know, you're human.
Yeah.
And you're in, and you're, you're individualist. Okay, let's move along, looking at the timeline again. If, once we do the second, you guys are gonna got it on the board, you're gonna think about the search committee, something you guys need to discuss, but before you get into that, whatever happens on the second, then on the seventh, that's when we start interviewing semifinalists, depending on who's gonna do it, okay? This entire process should be finished by December fourteenth. Now, things may come into play, so remember this is flexible, but I'll also go, we go, go through your contact person or the board president or the, I keep saying board, committee, chairperson, to make sure everything's on the up and up, make sure all the board members understand where we are and what we're doing. Okay? Now, let me just go back, you guys need to think about, I don't know if you wanna do it tonight, or you wanna do it later on.
The makeup?
The makeup of the committee.
I, I think maybe while you're here, we should start that discussion at least. Um, you know, and if, if you'd like, I'll, I'll recap what you and I had discussed earlier and you just jump in and correct me where I'm wrong. So, Dr. Rush and I were talking about that and of a search committee versus just school committee and different options that we have available. For a search committee, they recommend either nine, eleven, or thirteen members. Um, there's also a hybrid where we could have a search committee and then have three school committee members sit on that, that same panel or if just the school committee itself is, is running the search. Um, the week of, and I put November the thirtieth because that twelve-two is, is the middle of the week. Um, so that week, the first week after Thanksgiving, um, Ray and Associates will be narrowing down the pool from however many applicants they get, narrowing it down to, within their com- within their association and how they process it, they'll be narrowing it down to eight to ten candidates. So, the week of November thir- So, the week of November thirtieth, and this is something I wanted us to think about because it's a logistical thing. I mean, if we go with a search committee, we still have to decide on the makeup of the search committee, but just logistically. The week of November thirtieth, those nine, eleven, or thirteen members would need to be available for video interviews where they would be watching the videos of the eight to ten candidates. They would be reviewing the resumes, and they would be developing and filling out the matrix of criteria, the, how they meet the criteria. So, that would be a meeting where we'd have to, you know, those people would all need to be able to get together on one date. If we did it, a search committee plus three school committee members, that's just three more people that you have to get to agree on a date. If we just do it with school committee, it's just the seven of us getting together one day that week. So, figuring that, you know, that's going to be several hours. From that meeting, that narrows down to six to eight candidates that will be brought in for face-to-face interviews. So, those face-to-face interviews would be taking place the week of November the seventh.
December the seventh?
December the seventh. So, at that time, Dr. Rush was suggesting that all school committee members need to join in for the face-to-face interviews so that we can see the candidate, so we can see all the candidates that have been narrowed down. So, logistically, that would mean now we're trying to schedule a meeting with sixteen, eighteen, or twenty people. Or twelve, fourteen, sixteen people, or the seven of us. Realizing that each one of these interviews is approximately an hour. So, if you're looking at six to eight candidates. We were talking about the possibility of a Saturday to do it all in one day. Otherwise, we would have to break it up into two or three evening sessions that we would be interviewing these candidates. And then, at the end of this set of interviews, whichever option we choose, those people need to sit and meet with Dr. Rush to debrief and move forward with that matrix. Which takes us to the week of December fourteenth, the following week, which is where the two to three finalists that are brought forth from the previous week will be interviewed by school committee, about an hour and fifteen minutes each. And then, we will be meeting with Dr. Rush afterward, again, to go through, excuse me, the matrix and decisions. At that point, before we choose a finalist, if we wish to do site visits, that would be when we would be scheduling site visits. So, that's why it says optional onsite visits. And then, at that point, Dr. Rush would be meeting with them to, once we determine a finalist, to consult, to work out contract terms, offer a contract and everything else. So, the reason, when he and I were talking earlier, is besides what he's already mentioned about the confidentiality, the political nature of a search committee, is the logistics. Because if we are, if we go search committee, whatever members we decide is, are going to constitute that search committee, and whatever people fill the, what individuals fill those slots, they're going to have to be available on those certain dates for long periods of time. And then, a search committee still requires in week two and week three, for the school committee to be present with that. So, again, it's scheduling up to twenty people where we can all be together on a day. Because we can't ask for search committee members who can't serve on all of the meetings. Otherwise, you're not getting fair evaluations or fair representation. You know, if a member can meet one time, but not the other. We can use flexible people. The middle option of having the search committee plus having three school committee members sitting on there allows, that we, we're not breaking open meeting laws, though Diane did say, if school committee members are sitting on there, we do have to post them as open meetings. Executive session.
To review resumes and things like that.
Right. But those three school committee members would then be representing all seven of us, and they would be bringing information back to us. And then, if we just went with the school committee alone, conducting the search, we're involved from start to finish. And like Dr. Rush said, whichever we choose, there are going to be people unhappy with the decisions that we made. Whether we're having a search committee, or whether school committee is doing it themselves. I can say that when we were talking, Dr. Rush did suggest that if we are going with a search committee, that we make sure that it's a cross-representation of the entire community, which includes minorities. That no one who holds an elected office be a member of the search committee. That no one employed by Long Meadow Public Schools, and again, these are suggestions only. Anyone employed by Long Meadow Public Schools, whether it be principals, whether it be teachers. Because as we were discussing, there's the potential for swaying non-educators as to candidates that they would prefer. And that, as a reminder, everyone would have to sign a confidentiality agreement. So, with that said, I think I covered everything we talked about.
Yes, yes.
So, if, I look, you know, for you all to weigh in and share your thoughts on this. I know this is all brand-new tonight, but I just thought I'd put it out there in terms of, you know, like you said, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but I do know, we have had community members emailing us, asking us to consider them being on the committee. And I don't want to, personally, I don't want to drag this out until, you know, say, the beginning of November to start advertising for community members to apply, or however we're going to choose them. Because they'd have to be ready to go that week of November thirtieth, right after Thanksgiving. So, we can begin the discussion tonight, see where it goes. Any questions that you all have that maybe Dr. Rush could answer that I didn't cover well enough? So, Russ?
Yeah, I do have. So, the way I understood in our interview earlier today is basically, let's say we get thirty people that apply, or forty people, or whatever. Ray and Associates would actually, you know, narrow it down to people that really fit our qualifications, and bring those, let's say, eight to ten, to a subcommittee, whatever it is. And that first round is done by video. So, you actually would conduct the interview, and every, the search committee sees it on video, but not in person.
Right.
Right? And then, after that, everything's face-to-face?
After that, then you got, we would do the matrix, and you would make a decision as to how many people are gonna come back. Could be eight, could be six. And then, we would schedule the next meeting.
Those are face-to-face interviews here in Long Meadow.
Pardon me?
With us.
Yes, the face-to-face, right. The second would be the face-to-face, yes.
So, I think that the way that would work is the, when we get down to the face-to-face, the six to eight, and then the two to three. I think both rounds would have to be public, if we do it as a whole committee.
Well, no, it's executive session.
I don't know.
Well, you've already done.
If you're all sitting on the search committee in the semifinals, it's gotta be.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you've already done interviews of these same people.
Can you, let me ask you a question. I think we mentioned it, Russell. Can, the videos, does that count as?
No, that wouldn't have to be.
Okay. I mean, in other words, if you got all the committee members, it'd have to be public?
If we went, Diane, with just school committee members?
Does it have to be public for the video ones?
No, that, well, you have preliminary screening committees, you can do that.
Yeah, but if the whole committee is preliminary, I think we need to check open meeting law.
Yeah, the videos, I think you're suggesting we don't, it wouldn't be the committee doing the video portion.
No, that's one option.
So.
That's one option, right. And we may wanna do that, but we're gonna check with AG's office. You can say, you can have it narrowed down to the people you're gonna see face-to-face. There's six to eight people depending.
To consider and interview applicants for employment by a preliminary screening committee or a subcommittee. So, if we are the screening committee, then we would, if the school committee determines itself to be the preliminary screening committee, then we would be able to convene an executive session.
Session, right.
To do the preliminary screening, under the open meeting law.
Right.
Is preliminary considered the videos? But the second ones, the face-to-face are not preliminary.
Right.
Right, 'cause this just says, "To consider and interview applicants for employment by a preliminary screening committee or subcommittee appointed by a government body if open meeting will have a detrimental effect in obtaining qualified applicants." Provided, however, that this clause shall not apply to any meeting, including meetings of preliminary screening committees or subcommittees appointed by a government body to consider and interview applicants who have passed a primary or preliminary screening.
Which would be the video.
The first face-to-face one are gonna be public.
Correct, but the video one, the week after Thanksgiving, could be held in executive session, should it be the school committee only.
I mean, the problem I'm thinking about is finalist, as you said, wanna be, they're okay being public once they're finalists. But a finalist really isn't six to eight people.
No.
It's like, two to three.
Yeah, up to five, maybe.
Sure.
But you don't wanna go, six to eight, I wouldn't consider myself really a finalist, and so I don't know, I'd want my name out there as being a finalist.
But would, could that still be considered preliminary screening?
They've already been interviewed once.
Okay.
And the problem is, is if you have a screening committee, and then all seven of you join them, you're still all together, and we'd have to post it. It'd have to be a public thing.
Now, do those, the preliminary screenings that you do on your own, with the, that are taped, are, those are not done live, they're taped and then sent to us to review?
No. No, here's what happens.
Okay.
We will screen, you get fifty, sixty applicants depending. We will screen and narrow them down.
Okay.
We will interview each of them. One of our associates will interview each of them, and say, either you're certified, you're not, whatever. We'll also have a list, so you guys will know who applied. So, somebody can say, well, I applied, but they didn't call me. And then, we can also show you why we didn't select that person, even though you guys can look at the application, well, we wanna interview this person, and that's up to you. Once that's done, we will narrow it down to ten or twelve people, eight to twelve people. That's the ones that you will see the videos on.
Okay.
Okay? Once you've seen the video.
Well, that's the one, the search committee, not necessarily the school committee.
Preliminary committee.
Right, the preliminary committee.
Whatever committee, right, you can do that.
You being, whatever committee we determine will win that, which is right, okay.
Whatever the committee you determine, will see the eight to twelve depending.
So, that would.
Then you say, right, then you, we wanna see face-to-face, six, eight, four people. I promise you, at least six.
Now, Diane, if a search committee with no school committee members on it narrows it down to six to eight. That still doesn't make it preliminary, that we could have it in executive session for us to face-to-face interview the six to eight.
Well, why don't we just say six, and we'll do three on one night, three on another, one hour each?
And then, the hour plus to debrief afterwards.
And that's a final.
Well, definitely, but.
If it's six people, you're a finalist.
We should, let's, my suggestion would be that we get an opinion from the AG's office on this one.
Yeah, I know.
We did discuss that.
Yeah. So, I mean, we, why don't we, why don't we talk to Liz tomorrow and ask her to get an opinion for us? We can't be the only school committee that's ever run into this issue.
Because, Dr. Rush, would, if you were one of, say, six, if we're just rounding it to six, if you were one of six final, six people.
Semifinalists.
Semifinalists, would candidates have a problem with that being public?
As long as they know ahead of time.
Okay.
Okay, we could say to the candidates, listen, if you're one of the six, if you want, we won't say six, you're the one who chose and you come to the second interview, okay? Because of the laws in Massachusetts, okay, that may be televised. We let them know. Like I said, we did Florida, and we let them know, and those who were looking were okay with it. If somebody reluctantly said no, then they decided not to apply. People who apply, they're gonna understand and know what the Massachusetts laws are anyway. So, they know that they're subject to be seen or heard, or somebody's gonna do what they need to do.
Okay.
See, I would rather, so I don't really wanna interview them twice anyway, so I'd rather just say, I want from the preliminary screening committee, three to six people. No less than three, no more than six. They'll be the finalist interviews. They come to us, we interview them once, and then we could do site visits of, you know, the people we really liked, and then we make a decision. But that way, we're not calling them out here twice to meet with the same people twice, too, which nobody wants to do.
True, but I don't necessarily want the initial, if we're talking that scenario, I don't want it just limited to three. I would say the six to eight would be fair, because we've not seen, we've not seen the other candidates, you know, and if we had sat in on those initial screenings, there might be somebody who we would have wanted to see bad, that the search committee themselves didn't move forward. Do you know what I mean?
So, we could say, give us the top six, and then we look at all the resumes, and interview all six. I mean, interviewing is just, you don't see the full committee interview twice normally. You have a preliminary screening committee, then it goes to the school committee. We interview once, and then we pick. Now, sometimes you'll go around again and just interview two people again, just if you're caught between two. Usually, somebody kinda rises to the top and you pick that person, but.
Right. So, you're saying if the school committee were to do it on their own with no search committee, that it would be, when we get to that second week of that six to eight, you wouldn't really see a purpose in the following week of two to three?
Well, I want a search committee, so I would want the search committee to do the video interviewing and looking at resumes, and give us, and I'm fine with saying, six. Instead of three to six. But I wouldn't wanna, I just don't wanna interview the same people twice. I mean, interviews aren't that instructive anyway. We need to look at their references, we need to look at their background checks, we need to hear from everybody that's worked with this person in the past. But the hour interview, I mean, it's good to see how they perform.
Right.
You know, on public and in front of people, how they speak, but a one-hour interview doesn't tell you if this person's really the person for the job. It's simply an aspect of the process, but it's, in my mind, the most important part is really looking at their background checks, what they've done in their career, you know, all those type of things.
If we do site visits, site visits, you know.
John?
Russ, can I ask you, when you say you're for the search committee, that includes three school committee people?
I would prefer not to have, because what happens when you have school committee members on the search committee, let's call it the preliminary screening committee, so that would follow the law. So, that group would be, if you have three people in the school committee, they know so much more than the rest of us, that they come in, and if all three say, this is the person we need, and the other four think, well, maybe not, we're, you're at a disadvantage. You don't really know what to do, and you automatically have a split on the committee.
Let me just interject for a second. What we do on, the way we handle the video, everybody watches the video, the video, then look at the resumes. They're not talking to each other, no conversations. The conversations will not take place until after we've done the matrix. The matrix will say who's gonna rise to the top, who's first, second, third. Once I give you who's first, second, third, then you discuss. So, what you're doing, you're taking away board members' influence prior to everybody's having an equal opportunity to look at everybody. And we do that, and each time we do a matrix, that's how we do it. So, you guys, you can't discuss it with the board chair, because you like this person, and the two of you like this person. So, we take that away because it's fair. Not that you have to go with what will come down in the matrix, but we say to you, this person rose to the top. So, give you an idea of who you may wanna bring back.
Sure.
But I'd rather not have the committee members, the school committee members on that group.
Well, Russ, I would, in talking with Dr. earlier, probably having one school committee member be on there to be the liaison between Ray and Associates, the committee, and reporting back to the school committee. So, it's probably recommended, or suggested.
It suggested that if you got one, one committee member, I'm so used to board members, but one of you guys.
You can call it board members, it's fine.
One of you guys being on there just to make sure, you know, again, you're not gonna talk, you're not gonna influence anybody because of the matrix. But you can bring back to. but you can bring back to the public and say, listen, I'm the board member representative on the committee, but my, I don't speak any louder than anybody else. My role is to be the liaison, to say to the board chair, or say to you guys, this is how we work, okay? That's the only reason, unless you wanna do the other suggestions about the whole board, which I don't particularly favor. And, and in the most districts, what we've found lately is that school committees normally do what they need to do. But there's some communities that, no matter what, we want a process, we want a school committee, we want a, a, a search committee involved. Now, based on what you said, but what you can do, is not a bad idea, is have the search committee do the preliminary round, okay, bring it down to eight, six to eight people, and then turn it over to you guys. They've done their job, they narrowed it down to six to eight people, you got one board member on there, or who will say to you guys, uh, I agreed, or I didn't agree with the committee, whatever, but you narrowed it down, and then you guys have to take it from there. Because if you continue to involve the search committee, and you guys not involved, then you're gonna come down to three people, and you're not gonna know them. I also suggest that somehow, one interview will not tell you, because what happens, we will help you develop the question for the interviews, or if you decide to do it yourselves. So you ask everybody the same, you ask the six people the same questions, then you have the matrix, then if you narrow it down to two or three, it's almost like you're asking them more in-depth questions about the district, and like you said, you get to know the person, what did you do under this situation scenarios. So you, you, you're gonna have to have at least three times to see the people, no, one, two times to see the people, one with the video, two to narrow it down to finalists, whether you have three, two or three finalists. And then, so you're gonna have to have two meetings, I don't know how we can do it, but you need two meetings. My question about Massachusetts law, can you have two meetings and go into closed session? Because it's attorney-client privilege, it has to do with not breaching the, the confidentiality of what you're doing, doesn't that allow you to go into closed session?
Then after we do the six to eight interviews, can we go to executive session to deliberate, is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes.
We can, yeah, we can go into deliberate, as long as we're not interviewing that person.
Right, so you go in and discuss and deliberate.
Yeah, so if we, if we have like a conversation with a finalist, and it's a public finalist.
Right.
We can then go into executive session and talk about them, yeah.
So would.
But you can't, but you can't do another interview without going into open session?
No, that can reconvene.
Yeah, but we, we'd have to do a second interview in open session, but I guess what I'm hearing from what you're describing is, we would do a preliminary interview, and we'd be able to do that in executive session, and from there, we'd narrow down to finalists, and they, that would be open anyway.
Yeah, I mean, the last few times I've had this occur, we had to do everything in an open session, after the preliminary screening committee's done.
No, but Michael, I think what's, we're saying is, the week of December seventh, when we're down to the six to eight.
Yeah.
We would interview the six to eight in open session.
Right.
But then, after those six to eight interviews, we then have a debriefing with Dr. after.
Closed session.
We can do that.
We can do that.
Okay, see, that's why.
I think you better check that with AG's office.
What'd you say?
I'd check that with AG's office, or Liz Valeria.
Yeah, we should do it all.
They're really not letting you do much in executive.
Just get it in writing.
But so, a, and from what I'm hearing you say, when you're describing those two different weeks of interviewing, and, and that you're learning more about a candidate, is the questions that occur in the first round are not the questions that are presented in the second round, which are not the questions that are presented in the third round? There are different questions in each stage of.
Right, the first five questions in the first round, there's, that's one, one-way interview, that's the video, okay? The general question, tell me about yourself, those kinds of things, the second round, or you ask the six candidates the same questions.
Right.
The third round, if you narrow it down to three, you're gonna be more specific in your question, because you wanna go in-depth about who that person is, and, you know, what they bring to your district. So what I'm saying, even, even if you have to go back, once you do your second interview, then you go back and close, go in closed session with me and debrief, then decide you're gonna bring people, three people back, have an open session for those three people to come back, then go and debrief again and pick your finalist. But the people will have to know, so the six candidates, each of them will know.
That they're in open session.
That they're in open session, it's gonna be televised, so you need to tell your board president, you need to tell your, your people, because you're gonna be out there, because we would've, we would've vetted them already, to make sure they're okay.
Right, so I, I, I know you and I have been doing a lot of speaking, I wanted to open it up to other board members to hear their thoughts, John?
Yeah, uh, what about vetting the search committee, in terms of?
Vetting the search committee?
Yeah, well, and, and I'm for allowing the public to participate, but some might have an axe to grind, are we gonna be able to ask questions about that?
Well, what, what, and, and Board Chair and I have discussed that, you, you can figure out a way to, 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 to bring people, you ask them to write a letter of interest.
Yeah.
And you guys can decide whatever that person is, because I know that you have some controversial people who had axes to grind. I'm not sure you want an axe to grind person on this committee, because you're taking everything else away, you know, and you want them to focus on the superintendent for the kids. So, so I don't know, I don't know if you can vet them like that, but if you guys know people on, who may be your friends, but they have axes to grind, you really don't want anybody on this committee to do that, because again, the superintendent or the, the candidate happens to see that, says, I don't want this job.
Okay, now, this search committee will only be talking to vetted candidates, that is, people who've checked their credentials?
We will, we will vet all the candidates, yes, we will make sure in our interviews, you know, we, we, it hasn't happened probably once in forty years that a candidate got away, and that was before all the technology, where we didn't have enough information. But we vet, we double, we double-check, triple-check, making sure, because again, we don't wanna be embarrassed, we don't want you guys to be embarrassed. So we will, we will vet them, so there's no need for your screening committee or your search committee to vet any candidates, okay? In vetting, they may, I mean, if somebody's, I mean, nobody's perfect, so if they find out something we didn't find out, please let us know right away. Yeah, but the vetting process will take place when our associates do individual interviews, background checks, and all that.
So I'll just put up what Dr. Rush and I had talked about earlier, if we went search, search committee route, and, you know, again, this is just him and I talking.
Right, what do you think?
We had talked about going with the eleven, and with those eleven, we would have one school committee member, who that would be the liaison between um, Ray and Associates and the school committee. We were talking about six parents, one from each, um, school. We were talking about having the town manager. We were talking about a representative from LEAF. One teacher rep, which would most likely be the union president. And we were talking about one business representative from the town who is not a parent. So we don't have any extra parental, saying that there's more from one school than another. So again, this, so you've got your six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. So again, we were just, when we were vetting things, that's kind of what we came up with, but again, it's open, like, like he keeps telling us, this is our decision, I'm sorry.
No administrator?
No, no, ad, nobody who is employed by Long Meadow Public Schools, with the exception of the one representative for the teachers.
Is the LEAF person a parent?
Yes, 'cause I believe everybody on LEAF right now is a parent.
Is that how, I mean, a parent with a kid in the district right now, not versus?
Um, no.
I'm a member of LEAF.
I know, but other than, John, is everybody else on the current LEAF board?
I believe so.
A parent, yeah.
Everyone on the board, yeah, now, LEAF members, by definition, is by board.
Right.
There's a lot of LEAF supporters.
Right, but no, we're talking about a board member from LEAF.
I have a question about, well, again, you got the town manager, at, at this level, and a business person, and what does that mean? The head honcho over at the shopping center?
Could be.
Probably the biggest taxpayers.
Trying to find.
Are we gonna give them a break, is that it?
Trying to find diversity, um, and different points of view, I mean, we don't have a, um, what were you asking me about earlier?
It was, it was difficult to come up with, you, you don't have any community, you don't have an, what do you call it, I can't even think.
I know, that's what I'm thinking, the Rotary.
Chamber of Commerce.
You don't have a Rotary or Chamber of Commerce, you don't have those, and I was surprised that you don't, because normally you get representatives from the business, somebody, the president or somebody from the chamber.
The Chamber of Commerce.
No, we've Rotary, we just belong to Springfield's.
Say that again?
To Rotary means Springfield.
The Rotary's in Springfield.
And then we can, we can talk to the greater Springfield Chamber, or the east of the River Flatt County Chamber.
Well, then you can do that, you can, you can have a Rotary, if, well, a Rotary from this area, right?
Yeah.
Who's on the Rotary in Springfield from Long Meadow?
Maria.
So other than your superintendent.
Maria Angelides, I don't know.
Maria Angelides, that she's an elected official, yeah.
This is, like I said, this is not an easy process, now, what, what I heard Russ say, and I think we mentioned it before, what, what hasn't happened is, you guys have to decide, even, this is a tough decision, but second next decision, how four, if you decide to go with the search committee, where do they stop? We talked a few minutes ago, and we said, they're gonna do the first, uh, preliminary, then they're gonna turn it over to the committee, so you have to say to them, you guys are gonna be involved in looking at the first group of twelve, eight to twelve people, then you won't be involved anymore. I don't know how people are gonna look at that, but they need to know their role. Your role is narrow our search process down to six people or eight people, then you're gonna have a board committee to do what we need to do, so those decisions have to be made as well.
Right, so, Russ.
Can we just throw out a variety of options and then talk about them? As far as, because I was, um, so I was thinking if we did nine, we could do one principal, one assistant superintendent, the six parents, as you have listed, and one teacher rep. Be another way to do it. I'd like to hear anybody else's suggestions too, but I think if we threw out a bunch of different options.
Six parents, one admin, one principal?
One principal, one assistant superintendent, six parents, one teacher rep.
Looks like Sue's volunteering right now.
And what about the one school committee member?
I would rather not have a school committee member on it.
So who is gonna be, then, a, and this is what we had talked about, then if we don't have a school committee member on the preliminary search, somebody has got to, somebody who we all feel comfortable with and trust, is going to have to bring all of that information back to us to report.
Well, what about the two people sitting at the other end of the table who Russ just, you know?
Well, but, a, and I'm just saying, that's fine, I don't know if they want that responsibility, you know, and, and that's all I'm saying is, and I'm fine with throwing out other ideas and looking at it, but that was just something that, um, we had talked about, is there's got to be a point of contact between Ray and Associates and the school committee.
Well, I think there can be a point of contact, I just don't, what I see in this process is the one person that's on that, or three people or whatever, is on the, um, preliminary screening committee. There's always rumblings about, well, they didn't bring this person forward, why didn't they bring that person forward, or why did they bring this person forward instead? I think if we're just out of that process, we have enough people, nine or eleven people, they make a decision, Ray and Associates is gonna have a matrix with, you know, excluding the crazy people, so we shouldn't get somebody that's totally incompetent. So, at that point, we're just, um, and we still have six to eight people coming to us.
Right.
So I think, I'd just rather stay out of it completely, have that level taken care of by administration and parents and teachers.
And then it'd be turned over.
And then we still have six to eight people that we're gonna look at.
And then it'd be turned over to school committee for the six to eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good instinct, quite honestly, because, you know, I think the sort of, the less involvement we have in, in sort of culling the field is probably the better, because at the end of the day, it is on us to make the decision, and we should really be able to walk into this without any, you know, sort of preference in our minds, we should be able to look at the six to eight people and say, alright, these are, you know, this, we're gonna evaluate them with very little knowledge of who they are.
John?
I'd like to see a senior citizen on there, I would bump off the business person, not literally, but.
I know, I s, I mean, just someone from the senior center, maybe?
And put in a senior citizen, they have a large stake, they are the largest stakeholder in the community demographically. And there's a number who are very sympathetic to the schools, and understanding of the schools.
What would you just bump, bump off the school committee at a principal, assistant superintendent, teacher, and six parents?
Russ was making it nine.
Okay.
You want an odd, odd number.
Right, 'cause you either want nine, eleven, or thirteen, so.
Not an odd group.
Can I ask, um, when, in this preliminary section, and, um, when are, when is the committee going to be talking about? After, after the matrix, they get to discuss, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so what if we, um, have a pers, a school committee on the, on the board, but they're not part of that discussion, but they get to meet everybody first? And do you like, go through the?
They get to watch all the interviews?
They get the, the big picture of, yeah, that part, and the more candidates, and they get to do the matrix, and then they step off. So at least they can see everything and, um.
So that a school committee member can see the eight to ten, can listen to the discussion, but doesn't have a voting right?
Right.
Is, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, just to be the relayer of the information, like we're saying, 'cause we, I, I do.
An independent observer?
Right, and I don't know if, again, that we know someone that can tell us all the information.
I mean, I still would like Dr. Rush to do it, but I mean, that's up to the whole committee to decide.
Oh, all right, I forgot about Dr. Rush.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's, I don't understand, can you explain to us why you shouldn't be the liaison?
Say that again?
Can you explain to us why, why it wouldn't make sense for you to be the liaison versus a school committee member?
I could do that, but again, it's your search, because what I, what I need to do is be able to control, if you decide to have the search committee, I gotta be able to control the search committee.
Yep.
I gotta be able to say to guys, listen, this is why you're here, settle aside your differences, and let's do what we're here for. But I can do, I can be that liaison, and, and I could talk to the board president, or your, your contact person, say, this is how it went, I, I could do that. You could still have nine people, and I got no problem with the nine people you suggested, because again, like I said, we give suggestions, but your guy, it's ultimately up to you guys, and you gotta trust the process. So, I could do that, I could be the nine, those nine people could just be the nine people, and I could be the contact in making sure that our office, and your office, and your contact person, I can relay materials and everything, because I'll have the mater, the matrix, I'll have control of the matrix, I'll have control of making sure who went to the top, you know, who the people you wanna bring back, so I'm, matter of fact, I kinda do that anyway. But sometimes you want your school personnel, because I don't want anybody to say that Ray and Associates chose a superintendent, 'cause that's not our role.
Right.
My role is to assist you in bringing good people to you, and have you guys make an informed decision. As long as we know that, your public understands that, whatever committees understand that, that they're not choosing, they're narrowing it down, and you guys have to make decisions, so yes, I could do that.
My only point about that, though, is that the school committee member does the matrix and has their opinion in that without the discussion, so then they have a part of deciding out of those ten to twelve to narrow it down to the six, because we do have to work with the superintendent, not just the teachers, the parents as well. And that, that's why I think we should have a sliver of our own, um, opinion in there. 'Cause we need a good relationship.
Right. I was gonna ask, you have made a recommendation or suggestion earlier about no paid employees being part of the search committee, which would mean a principal and assistant superintendent, can, can you tell me again why?
Let's change, let's change, I made a suggestion.
I know, but can you tell me again what your suggestion's reasoning for?
Yeah, my, my thinking was that you don't want anybody to sway, one way or the other, uh, who may rise to the top, are those folk, okay? So if you're gonna do that, because if you bring one, you have to bring, why not me? You brought this person in, why not me, so that's what we were talking about. I say, a way to get around that is you say, no, nothing against any administrator, any teacher, or anybody in the district, say, if you bring one, people are gonna ask you, why did you only bring one? And then you brought this one, but you brought this person, but not me, so to get away from that, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a search committee not involving those people. But I'm still not against what was said, the suggestions that you guys said about bringing staff members and assistant superintendents, I'm not against that. I'm not against that, uh, excuse me, 'cause, uh, I'm equipped enough to make sure that who's ever on the search committee, they're gonna, the process is gonna go as it should with the matrix, and that's the telltale sign right there.
Now, Russ, trying to combine what John was asking with, with what you proposed, would, would you consider putting, or suggesting putting a senior citizen on and taking one of those people off?
One parent. So do five parents, one senior citizen.
I, I don't see how we can do five parents with six schools.
Well, I don't thi- I think what we-
I think that was the point of doing the six schools, so there's equal representation.
Yeah, but I, a lot of times what happens is you might get five people from the high school that wanna do it, and nobody from one school. I think the preference should be, we try to get one from every school.
Well, I, I think that was, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I think that that was, um, I, I'm, and I didn't explain it clearly, when I put six parents, one from each school. So, it wouldn't be that, you know, if we weren't getting anything, say, from the high school, we would actively be contacting, you know, whether it be through Alert Now or through whatever, of saying, we want representation from the high school. Um, to get a parent to commit to that one night or one day of, of interviews. I don't think, a- at least it wasn't my intent to say, well, if no one from the high school put their name in, that we would just pick another parent from Glenbrook or Williams or, or anywhere else.
Yeah, I mean, we might-
So that's why I would just say I'd hate to remove a parent. I would prefer to see removing either the principal or assistant superintendent. No offense.
Well, I guess that would be another option, but what, what we could do is add to, go to eleven, so leave the six parents. I don't think necessarily, no matter how hard we try, we're gonna get one parent from every level. Maybe we will, I hope we do.
Oh, I, I think we will.
But a lot of times you don't. But if we do, then I guess we could do eleven. I still think you need a principal and assistant superintendent, in my mind, are the two that are gonna make sure, as Ms. Bone's saying, that we don't get somebody here that we can't work with.
Right.
I mean, those people have a real in- interest in not doing that either.
They're sort of like your, your validators, in a way.
Yeah.
Did your education last?
Did anyone look at the last search committee that we had, that, for, when we hired Marie?
Do what, Sue?
So, I think there were thirteen members in the last search committee. Um, I'm looking at a really old email. There are, uh, one principal, one assistant superintendent. Were you on the committee, Diane?
I was on it as a support staff, that was on the.
Um, uh, teacher, school committee.
Select board.
So, yeah, okay, a la select board, wow. Another principal, one parent.
Uh, who was on it? Bill Shabelli?
Yeah, two parents, another school committee, and then-
Yeah, there were two, two-
So, a lot of those people had dual roles too.
Right.
There were parents and they were school committee, or they were parents and teachers. We have a lot of that in this community, so.
Right, there were two school committee, four administration, one teacher, one support staff, one select board, one elementary, one place, one community member, one leaf, and one student. That's who was on.
Oh, that's right, we had a student.
The previous.
Yep. Yep, I-
And because the parent who was representing the middle school and high school dropped out.
And it wa- it was a bi- it felt like a big committee.
There were fifteen?
It did feel like it, and it, but it was really well managed, I guess, I would say, um.
Yeah, there were fifteen.
Do you want a student on there?
Yeah, I-
Yeah.
So why don't I, I'll amend what I said before.
Okay, so you want to add-
So, how about one principal, one assistant superintendent, six parents, one teacher rep, one student, and one senior center? Or senior citizen, maybe from the senior center. So that would be eleven.
Okay. It's manageable. So I think, um, and I, and I don't-
Obviously, a high school student.
I don't mean to, to cut this-
Are you sure?
This conversation, because I know we, we could continue debating this all night, and, um, I know we have other business to take care of, plus we have executive sessions. So, what I'm going to suggest is that, 'cause we have time, a- as you indicated, to make a decision. Um, probably making a decision by the end of October, so that if we are going with a search committee, we have enough time to advertise for that and make those selections. Um, because at that time, we would also need to make sure that our dates were all set, so that people who would be sitting on the committee know what they need to commit to. Um, so what I would suggest is that we either, and our next agenda is full, um, you know, whether, we'll have to look whether we need to call an extra meeting, or whether we're going to take care of it at our first October meeting. Um, but that we all think about the pros and cons of what we've talked about tonight, we think about composition of the search committee, bringing forth ideas where we can just brainstorm, um, of how we wanna see it. I- is that acceptable?
You don't think we can decide right now? I really don't wanna have another meeting just for that purpose, I'd rather just.
What, on the composition?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm comfortable with the, the composition that Russell, uh, proposed.
The eleven?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that, I think it has, it's sort of broad enough that we're including a lot of people, and, you know, obviously, we do wanna make sure that the, you know, that we're, we're representing different factions in the community, um.
And then just to be clear, is, based on what you're proposing, Russ, is that that search committee will do the video interview, resume review, and matrix the week of, the week after Thanksgiving, and then from there forward, it would all be school committee?
Yeah, at least six to eight, which was the approach.
Right, the six to eight that we would be.
They'll narrow, and we'll, we'll take-
Could I ask you to run those, uh, one more time, Russ, your, your latest amendment?
Yep. So one principal, one assistant superintendent, six parents, one teacher rep, one high school student, one senior senate, uh, senior citizen.
Okay.
And a partridge in a pear.
So, no leaf, dropping leaf?
That could be one of the parents, but I don't think it has to be.
Well, oh, well, yeah, okay. Well, and if I could, just for clarification, parents, but not schoo- a parent can't be a school committee member.
Yeah.
Correct. And we're saying six parents with one from each school, one representing each school.
If possible.
So we wanna clarify that.
Yeah.
Because we really try to make sure that all levels are represented.
Yep. And I would hope that we're gonna get somebody from leaf, maybe more than one in that group, because they're actively been schooled too.
I, I think you're right, I agree. No, I just wanted to get the number right.
Yeah.
It is-
I agree with that.
So you're, Liz, are you comfortable with that?
I guess.
Michelle? All right, so that would be, so we've agreed on the composition. I guess the only other question is how to select individuals to fill those slots. Are we going to ask them to send an email with an explanation of what position they're requesting? And why are we vetting that, or are we just putting every name that we receive in a hat?
Well, I mean, I think that we certainly want, you know, we, we don't wanna be exclusionary, but I'll let you.
I think, I think you should advertise in your local whatever, or on your website, saying that the Board of Education would elect them by, and by the following in the search process. And in that, you would say, as you said, a parent from each school, some parents may have kids in more than one school, I'm sure that happens. But apparently, it's a parent formation, each school, one building principal. I would, um, have the principal association, union, or whatever, to decide which representative they want, okay? Or your senior citizen, but if you advertise it, and then it's clear, and if interested, please forward something to the Board of Education or whatever by a certain date. At the same time, uh, if you know of organizations where parents are, or, or you could say to this PTO committee, here's what we're putting out. We just want one part, not necessarily a PTO parent, but we want a parent. As long as you're advertising, you're covered, because you don't want somebody to say they were left out, especially if there's six parents in the six schools.
Right.
So then, how do we, do you have any suggestions on how we determine who actually a- ends up on this committee?
Yes, if you get, if you get three people from the same school.
Yeah.
Then you say that you're gonna do a lot of, you're gonna put the names out of the hat.
Okay.
You know, that way you're not being exclusionary, you're not picking one person over the other, and you may have some controversial people, but that's what happens. But the, we can control, I can control the process of those folk who may be controversial, because I'm gonna say, this is what we're here for. We're not here to talk about redistricting, we're not here to talk about this, that, and the other. We're talking about the kids and hiring somebody to run your schools. So I can control that. If I have an issue, then I, my board is to come to, to the board and the board president, or the chair, and, and, and you guys, and say, guys, we have an issue. But I think we'd be okay with that.
And should we set a date right now for that meeting, so that they know?
I think you need to set a date, and try to get this stuff out tomorrow, you know, ASAP, with basically a timeline. Our timeline suggests that we wanna do this by this date, so we need you to, uh, begin to submit your names if you're interested.
So with that meeting, that's going to, eh, the week after Thanksgiving, that's going to vet the videos and
Right.
bring forward the six to eight candidates, how long should that evening take?
That evening, depending, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do eight to ten people, the videos are five minutes. After the videos, we don't talk, we read their applications, okay, and then we do the matrix. So, the, uh, if you got ten applicants, five, fifty minutes, uh, it's gonna take fifteen, twenty minutes, maybe a half hour to read. That's gonna be a long meeting. So I suggest you say to people, if you wanna start, now what you can do is give them a bite to eat. So if you're gonna start a meeting at five o'clock, food will bring people out. So if, if, if you feed them, and you say to them, after we watch the video, while you're doing your, going through your, your application, you can grab a bite to eat.
Okay.
And when they finish eating, while they're doing the matrix, I can grade the matrix, and then we have a discussion.
So if we say that that evening would be from five to ten PM?
From five to ten PM, yes.
It's like our retreat.
And then, um, would you like to pick a date since, I was just gonna say, can't we put it on the calendar? 'Cause we need to, to put that, Diane, do you have the district calendar back up again?
Let's see. What do we say that?
We said the week after Thanksgiving, which starts November thirtieth through December fourth. It doesn't involve any of us.
No, I know, I, I have another thought, but I don't wanna interrupt what we're doing right now.
Go on, go, I mean, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, that's fine, you can-
Yeah, 'cause I'm not the chair, I'm sorry, that was my role.
It's all good, no, no, no.
So, I just, eh, I just occurred to me, like, and I don't know if it makes a difference, because I, I think, sa- ha- you know, we're, we're saying six parents, and we're gonna say one from each school. But that would mean that the elementary schools are disproportionately sort of, you know, they, they have more influence, in a way, than a high school parent. And that's not to say that each elementary community doesn't have its own challenges and strengths, and, you know, different constant, you know, different identities, but-
Looking at equalizing our elementary school is why we need three parents.
What was that?
Instead of looking at equalizing our elementary school.
I, I understand, um.
So I'm just kinda wondering-
But you also may have an elementary parent who also has a middle schooler, or who also has a high schooler.
And that's, no, and that's true. I just wanna make sure that we're not overrepresenting certain populations versus underrepresenting others, because, you know, the high school is, you know, one of the best high schools in the country, according to Newsweek, and we score really highly, and, you know, our middle schools are fantastic. So it's like, how do we balance the fact that we have three great elementary schools with three other great schools that deal with kids in grade six through twelve?
If I could, I think the elementary people have a greater stake in the superintendent, in that the child is gonna be here theoretically longer.
Longer.
The high school parents, you know, frankly, if you can get a freshman or sophomore level parent, 'cause junior and senior parents are worrying about college tuition, and they're outta here.
And that's a fair point, and I, I don't necessarily have any specific issues with it, but I wanted to kind of just raise-
Just make it clear that-
That that might be something that we're dealing with, is that there's a overrepresentation of certain populations.
Okay, but I don't think it's that bad for the elementary. I think it's a plus that, you know, attract people of a serious interest in the long term.
Yeah, no, a- absolutely.
Out of the school system.
Absolutely, and I, I think, I, I totally agree, I, I just kinda had that thought, and I thought I'd say it.
Okay. All right, I think that's fair. Diane, that week?
The week after Thanksgiving, um, Monday, the thirtieth, there's nothing on the calendar, and Wednesday, December second, there's nothing. I'd say Friday, there's nothing as well, but that's Friday.
Probably Wednesday the second is gonna be the easiest. Does that work for you, Dr. Rush?
Kinda works for me.
All right, so we're going to say Wednesday, December second, when we put out this information for individuals who wish to serve on the search committee. And for those who have already sent us emails, who have sent them to the school committee itself, we will make sure that they, that you get the information. Um, Diane, I know you're, you've been keeping a log that I've been sending you of who's sent interest. So we can just make, I'll get something together that you could send to them, so, to make sure that they-
And so, they, so they have to reapply then?
They have to, yes, because they're going to have to state what position they're interested in.
Oh, what group they're representing.
What group they would wish, wish to represent.
There's only three, so, three or four?
There's probably four, there's six schools.
No, how many do you already have?
How many emails have we gotten?
I've only gotten, I think three.
I think I've sent you four.
I've got one to send you, by the way.
I think I've only gotten three.
So, could we just email whoever, whatever number we have, and just tell them, this is a date, if you can do that, you're in our pool?
Well, no, because we need to know which group they're representing.
Which school?
Oh, okay.
Because you may have-
So you want everybody, so you're gonna email them and tell them you have to reapply?
Right, or to resend it in, because some people may have, you know, a middle schooler and an elementary, and I don't want to assume that they wish to be applying for one position and not the other. I, I don't wanna make that decision, we had said, you know, in, in the responses that I've sent out, it said, we will notify you once a decision's been made, so that you can-
So when we post it, we can say, we're looking for people that are on, and if you're a parent, tell us which school your kid's gonna-
Right, is that, you know, we're looking for individuals, um, from the community who are wishing to serve on the superintendent's search committee. If you are interested, you know, it, that these are the dates, this is the date and timeframe. If you're interested, please email the school committee by whatever date as to which position you would like to be considered for. Which role you'd like to be considered for.
They can only be considered if they have a kid in that school, though, right, so we'd have to say?
Yeah, but if they, for instance, like, let, if they stay, uh, if they stayed on there, they wanna either be the middle school or elementary school. Like, we can say, like, if you've got kids in both schools, why not allow them to say, I wanna be considered for both, and then if we fill the elementary, they're still in there for the middle, or vice versa.
I think if they just tell us where their kids are, we'll put a name in the, in two different halves.
Yeah.
That, that's fine.
Yeah, so that might, that might be the solution right there.
Right. You know, let us know what schools your child, child or children attend.
Are you available for ten hours on Tuesday, on Wednesday?
As far as the lottery for principal, assistant superintendent, I assume would they, they'll just pick who they want.
We, we figure that they can work it out amongst themselves.
Sue, Sue would be a great fit to do it.
There's gonna be arm wrestling involved?
She has seniority both in age and tenure here.
Okay.
Let me, let me just, uh-
You're welcome.
You can tell we're getting a little punchy now, right?
Yeah, what happens with time.
It does, it does.
It starts around eight AM.
So, does anyone else, wait, he can- Yes, I know, I was gonna just ask if, if anyone had any further questions. Liz?
Um, is, is the discussion, if we have a lot of candidates, and talking about the candidates that we got, is that in, um, a closed meeting?
Executive session.
Executive session?
We have to check.
Okay.
We're checking on that, with Attorney General.
But, so, are we doing a lottery for the parents and the senior citizens? Is that the idea?
I think it depends on how many you get, right?
Right.
But if we have to-
If you have one senior citizen, then they win.
Right.
But I mean, if we have to do it, that's the way we're gonna pick, is.
Yes.
I guess we'll just-
I think it's safest for all of us.
Yes.
So, I have one more question. What if-
Since you just got nominated?
N- uh, not officially.
No, you, that was official.
Well, we don't throw it in a hat.
I think that's a good idea, Diane, two names and a hat.
What if the search committee comes up with eight names, and there is a name out there that the school committee really wants to look at, despite that?
They can, they can decide that they wanna see a person. Uh, like I said, I, I will always remind you that if you see somebody that they may not have selected. You still have the option, we wanna see this person.
Okay.
Okay, we'll do that.
We're gonna see your whole list.
You're gonna see the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring the names of the people, I'm not gonna bring all the resumes.
Yeah.
Right.
But if there's a person you need to see, you can either contact me, our office, and say, listen, this person applied, will you make sure that I have that resume with me?
Michelle, did you?
I was just gonna add, in case, you know, we could ask Diane if she was interested too, if, uh, as one of the staff people, I don't know, does he, no?
You had, you had your fill on the last committee?
All right.
But what I, what I need, a couple things before we, before I wrap up.
Okay.
Um, we, we need to talk about going, and my- We, we need to talk about going in my topics for discussion. B, we did the advertisement, okay. Determine, discuss any certification issues. I checked with Massachusetts. If a person has, no reciprocity, but if a person worked in an out-of-state person, out-of-state candidate, now, they, it won't only take them, if they worked three years as an administrator, as a superintendent, it'll only take them a little while to get a temporary certificate, so that's not a problem. So we can deal with that in Massachusetts. That's not an issue, cause we've done it before. Okay, so certification, we will make sure the person got the proper certification and eligible for license in Massachusetts. We will do that. Okay, I need to know who my contact person will be.
For, for what?
For being paid.
For being paid?
It says it right here.
See, Mike, I told you Mike's a politician.
I would be Mr. Masso.
I read ahead.
Tom, okay, so you're gonna be my next best friend, right?
Off the search committee, so I'm happy to talk to you anytime.
That's terrible. See what he did to you, Susan?
We have a meeting at eight tomorrow morning. We'll be discussing this later.
Now, one, one other question. We, we, again, we have to, you guys have to decide our salary range. Okay.
I might.
Is that an executive session discussion?
No.
Thank you.
These are suggestions, these are salaries of people in like districts in your district, not your district, but like which area in districts. In Massachusetts, this is what they're being paid. So you need to make a decision, and I'm sorry, I don't have-
Were you trying to get to, like, whether they're a doctorate or those type of things?
I'm gonna talk about that, yes.
Yeah.
So you guys can decide that. Now, what we'd like to do on the flyer, it's gotta be a range on there, okay? People don't, people need to know basically what they will be making. If you're gonna say a range between one sixty-six and one seventy-five or whatever that is, depending on the person's experience. So you don't necessarily have to look at what these people are doing in these districts that are surrounding you. But it just lets you know that you got people with Georgetown, I don't know what that is.
Me neither.
It's up four ninety-five.
Okay, but the first, they got fifteen hundred students. And the salary for next year will be, well, actually this year, is pretty up there. Okay, so-
We have an opening.
Pardon me?
Not before you serve on the search.
I don't believe you. You're gonna jump ship already, huh?
Just cause you got nominated for the search.
I know, yes. So, so just look at this to get an idea. Now, again, you don't have to make a decision tonight, but think about it. And so on the flyer, you need to have the salary range on the flyer. And not a wide range. You don't wanna go from one forty to one two hundred. That's, that's not a range. That's ridiculous.
Yeah.
But you wanna go between ten, fifteen thousand dollars, cause it depends on the person. And also, salary's negotiable, depending on what the person brings to the table, what you guys are looking for.
Because doesn't years of experience and degree have a factor?
Years of experience, yes. They factor in. Matter of fact, I'm gonna talk about degrees. Now, there's no, I don't think there's in Massachusetts, but there's no prerequisite for a superintendent having a doctorate.
Right.
That, that's up to you guys. What we don't, we normally don't put that in there. We could say doctorate preferred. That doesn't mean if you don't have a doctorate, you can't be the superintendent. Because there are some people with doctors that I'll, I'll say no more. But, but again, you're looking for the best person.
Right.
Okay, and, but it is okay if you decide that you wanna say doctorate preferred, okay? You may wanna say experience. You wanna say five years superintendent experience or central office experience. You don't wanna close out people who may be deputy assistant superintendents because some of those people have been in those positions and they're ready to move. They're ready to move. So all those kind of things you're gonna consider in your, when you do your job description, profile kind of stuff. So understand that.
So we have time to make this decision?
You have time. You have this, you may wanna discuss this, and it's okay for the public to understand your range. What you wanna discuss is at your next meeting.
John?
Okay, just thank you for doing this, but this list is almost exclusively the eastern part of the state. The only one I recognize from the western region is Athol Royalston, and they're way above us. Kim, I don't know if I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do you still have that list that you posted?
You know, I'm looking at it right now.
Yeah, I'm on it too.
Michelle's looking at it.
That might be, that might be of some benefit to the committee.
They have the list from WWLP, which I think is where you pulled this information. I was just curious where you got, like, why you picked these few versus-
I'll just pick, okay, what are people, they, they're, they're in Iowa, so they look at Massachusetts. So I don't know how they decided to pick these names.
Okay.
Okay, so is your, these are suggested, but if you got a better list that you wanna look for, I would certainly use your list, because when I looked at this list and I looked at the salaries, I mean, the salaries and the number of students in the district, you know, and I know your, your salary, and I kinda frowned, but that's not my role. These are suggested, okay? I can either have my office to come up with a better list, or what you can do, you can send, see, this, this goes to you. This doesn't go out to, to superintendents or candidates. But you look at this and get an idea of what you wanna, what you wanna pay the next superintendent.
But, I mean, looking at it, it's basically kinda similar size and wealth.
Similar sized districts and comparable salary.
Most of these are fairly wealthy districts, mostly.
They are.
But around here, I'd say the list is about one forty-five to one sixty-five.
That's what, that's what it is, is in this area.
Just cause the cost of living is so different in this area compared to-
Oh, okay.
As compared to the eastern part of the state.
Yeah, like, you could look at our, like, districts if you wanted to off of this, this list online, and, you know, you look at, like, Wayland. And, and when I think about this, cause I've been trying, as you can tell, I've been thinking about the salary that we're gonna be trying to present for a while, um, we definitely need to make sure we're paying them, in my opinion, the top half. We have, we're very, we're a very successful district. We don't wanna be in the lower half. Like, when I look at this, I feel like we're paying the average for the state right now, according to this article. Um, and we're paying towards the top half, obviously not closer to Lexington or, you know, we're thirty thousand away from Wayland. But, you know, when you look at the cost of living out in Wayland, it's also very different than the cost of living out here in Long Meadow. But I think we're paying high for this area, which I think is a good thing.
Right.
So I don't wanna, definitely don't wanna, I mean, at this point, and I'll say definitely, at this point, I don't wanna go down in salary where we are if we can get someone that's experienced. I don't know, if that makes, what do you, I don't know what other people feel, um-
Yeah, well, I think we're gonna have to if we're gonna remain competitive. I agree.
I think we need to seriously consider the possibility of staying through or going up. And I don't wanna say the words going up, but-
Well, we, you know, I mean, the truth, I mean, you know, we can't necessarily go too much lower than where we are now just because, you know, it's, I mean, you can't start back, you're not gonna get the quality of person that-
That we want.
We want.
Right.
You know, and at the time when Marie was hired, everybody in town said, wow, that's a really high salary for Long Meadow. But it's, I, you know, it was comparable for Eastern Mass at the time, you know, that's what got you out of here. And, you know, I mean, I think that that was how we ended up with Marie, you know, not that, and of course, Long Meadow's just happened.
So I think maybe, you know, I, we can definitely put it on next meeting's agenda. Maybe I can take that list and do it as our like districts and our neighboring districts. Um, you know, granted, it doesn't have years of experience or-
Well, that's why you provide a band, you know.
Degree on it, but at least that would give us a, a better picture for eastern, western Mass than, than just using eastern Mass.
So you're thinking Hampton County and then like districts, the DESI?
I'm thinking like our, our neighboring, yeah, the Hampton County, who's in the collaborative, that, that group, and then looking at our like districts based on the DESI information.
And you can include, you should include Amherst in there, you know, even just sort of similar community type.
But I'm thinking of just if, if we narrowed down, instead of scrolling through that whole list of just kind of doing this,
No, yeah.
But doing it for our, our like districts and then our neighboring or surrounding area districts, it would give us something to look at and be able to have more discussion on.
Yeah.
And as long as we have it done before the thirteenth.
Right.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
Couple other things, yes. Some of you provided questions that you wanted answers, okay? Some of the questions that you may have provided, I can't or won't answer because they're not the kind of questions that, that we should ask. However, these are some questions, and what I can do, I can give them to you. Cause I think I answered most, most of the questions on, that you guys had regarding what you asked me or what you wanted me to do. These are the questions. We can take time to go through the questions. You can read them or go through your liaison person and have them contact me if you're not satisfied with the answers. And I got two sets of questions that I got from you guys, which is fine, because again, it's, it's your prerogative to ask whatever questions that you have or whatever concerns you may have. I think this answers most of the questions that you have. For example, somebody break down, is this expenses for national versus regional searches? Cost is basically the same, okay? Uh, if, 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 if I lived in California and we didn't have anybody on the east coast, then that would have been expensive. What we try to do, get people who live in the area of where we're going, so we cut down on the expenses. So that was one question. Presentation for us based on what, what we want. Yeah, this is yours. We, I'm flexible, whatever you guys want. I make suggestions, but like Russell came out with a better suggestion, and that's fine, and that's what we do. We, we don't recommend, we follow your lead and try to do that. Competition of the search committee, we thought about that. That's, that's answered. I think you came up with a good way to handle the search committee. Uh, who you recommend on the search committee, we talked about that. You get some of the names, but the main thing, when you got six parents, I think that's good. Somebody asked, will we need to make a decision regarding the competition on the sixteenth? You did, you didn't have to, but you did, which is good. Who will choose the search committee? I only suggest that you guys decide it, and that's, that's what, that should happen. Is the timeline realistic? Yes, but it's also flexible, okay? Uh, if something happens that's beyond our control, we can always come back and say, we need to extend it. The good thing is, 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 we said to the end of, the beginning of the year, you'll have somebody, if it has to go another ten, fifteen days because of issues, then we can do that. So we're fine with that. How many public forums they recommend, we talked about that. That's fine. Have we placed any candidates in Mass? Where we placed candidates in Wareham, Boston Public Schools with the superintendent, I mean, Cambridge, we did Cambridge. Uh, we did Springfield, Mass in oh eight, oh nine, so we've done searches, so familiar with what's happening in the Commonwealth, uh, wealth. What do you know about Massachusetts? We know a little bit because we did those searches. We know that law, laws, rules and regulations change. That's why you guys are gonna church with the AG's office, check with the AG's office to make sure that you're on the same page regarding what, how you're gonna do your, your process. Do you have any insurance on quality of, of, of the candidates? Yeah, we do vetting. We do extremely well vetting to make sure these folks don't have any issues. If they have issues and we found out that it was something that won't negatively affect the impact, we tell you. But whatever the issues are, we don't get into whether somebody's married or single, gay or lesbian or whatever. We don't get into that because again, we don't, we don't do that. We bring you the good candidates. Our job would not say what's, what that person's gender is, cause we don't do that either, okay? Uh, if somebody reads something and find that out, then that's on individual board members of people, but we don't get into sexual preferences. Somebody asks, how much commuting time are we going to have to pay for from Chicago to Long Meadow? We're not in Chicago. I don't know how that came up, but no problem. What is the timeline from start to finish? We went over that from the fifteenth of, of tonight until the fourteenth of December, which is a good timeline. Can we offer a one-year contract or do we have to give a three-year contract? I'm not sure of your laws on that, but you can offer a three-year contract. If a person does not work out, you can, you can really, you know, you have, evaluate the person out if they're not what you want. And by the way, we do guarantee two years. If the person you bring here happens to leave for whatever reason, we will come back and do the search only for expenses. So we, we do guarantee, we do guarantee that, so you guys would know that. The person happens to have to relocate or for whatever reason, person does decide to leave or you decide to get rid of the person because of inefficiencies or whatever, then we will come back and, and do the search. Okay, and the other set of questions, let's see. The other set of questions I'm gonna pass to you, some will be the same. There's just no formalize that you got. And if you had any questions, I'm trying to answer.
We can do it one to one.
Any questions for answering? But do contact me if I did not answer all of them.
Thank you.
You're not a board member, that's okay. It's okay, you worked with me.
Yeah, you put him to work tonight.
Oh, see, I'm saying like that. And let me, let me, let me just say, as, as I close out, that I understand extremely well how boards operate and how that function. I know there's some issues that you guys don't agree, and that's okay. But I, but I think in one of the board members I spoke to, and I'm gonna reiterate what that, what that person said to me. As board members, you wanna agree to disagree. Because you're individually selected, elected, you have individual opinions. But what I say to each of you, remember why you're here. And this job that you have right now is selecting a person who's gonna be responsible for making decisions for the kids in your district. And that's your utmost importance, and please keep that in mind. With that, I think that's it. Any questions of me?
You've been very thorough. Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And Mike, we'll talk tomorrow, not about your politics. I'm only kidding you, you know that.
Talk about it.
I know you would love to, right? But I enjoy it. Thank you, guys. I'll see you soon.
Yes.
And if it's acceptable with everyone, I'll work with Diane to set the, the times and the, the groups for the stakeholder representative meetings, and then we'll communicate with Dr. Rush. If that's okay, since we've determined what groups we were wanting to have. I'll just work with her on locations and, and times, and we'll get everything to you.
Okay, and my contact person will be Tom. Tom will be the person-
Tom's your new best friend.
Tom's my best friend.
Whenever you add an invoice.
But Tom, will you also be the person that our district needs to kind, our, our office contacts for information? Is that in the other? Okay, good.
Since you didn't get selected for the search committee.
I think he's happy about that.
But that's okay. I, I think Sue has a differ, different opinion there.
Things might change in the morning if you got eight o'clock meeting.
So I'll fire you off an email, we can set up a time.
Thank you very much.
Good night, thanks.
Oh, that's right, yes, man. Take care.
Yes, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Rush. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are you happy, man?
He's like, all right.
Thank you, okay?
All right.
So Dr. Rush, Michael contacts Kelly to set up-
Sure.
Time with you.
Contact Kelly and get the information, and you and I can talk in the next couple of days. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
All right, take care, everybody.
Thank you. Have a safe trip.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave. I got a meeting tomorrow.
Yes, I'll work with Diane on that.
So I'm gonna leave about four.
And for the information on the survey as well. And I was going to write up a brief-
But you know, it's not as far as I thought. It's only like-
Article for the newspapers.
Maybe four, four hours, fifteen minutes.
Where in New Jersey are you? Where's that?
That's on the Eastern Shore, near Atbury Park.
Oh, Atbury Park, okay. Gotcha. Gotcha.
Nice.
Right in that area.
Yes, right in the area, yes. Say hello, it was answered, Bon Jovi, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, guys, take care. See you soon.
Thank you.
All right, so, we do have a consent agenda for this evening, for one overnight field trip request?
I move, I move on the recommendation of the superintendent, that the school committee approve the consent agenda for the September fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen school committee meeting as presented.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion or questions, all in favor?
Well, I just, can I just, uh, this is that expensive trip.
Uh, this is a DC trip.
Yeah.
And it's just One hundred dollar middle school?
Yeah, and it, can we just be conscious of budgets for, you know, I, we had talked about this before, I don't wanna, it's late, I don't wanna drag it out, but.
I did mention it to the principals, I'll bring it back to them again.
Okay.
It is a lot.
It is, and children can't work at this age necessarily, so, you know, I know that they can budget with their family, but at the same time, if you can find a way to offer assistance for families that have hardships.
Okay, so, calling for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes?
I move the school committee approve the minutes for the July twentieth, twenty fifteen school committee meeting as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay?
I move the school committee approve
And not release.
And not release the minutes to the executive session of the July twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen school committee meeting as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move the school committee approve the minutes for the July, wait a minute, July twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen school committee meeting as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Make it easy for Diane.
I move the school committee approve and not release the minutes to the executive session for the August tenth, twenty fifteen school committee meeting as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
And finally, I move the school committee approve the minutes to the August tenth, twenty fifteen school committee meetings, meeting as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Just a little time delay there, Michelle, that's all right. All right, so we do have an executive session planned for this evening.
I move that the school committee adjourn to executive session for the purpose of strategies relates to litigation, not to reconvene to open sessions, motion requires a roll call, vote.
I second that.
I'm sorry, one thing, did we leave it off? I don't
Oh, you wanna do the gridiron?
Yes, I, I don't know.
Withdrawn.
Huh? Withdrawn, withdrawn, okay. One thing that, um, and maybe it was under old business, or maybe we just, I think we redid it.
It's on the, it's not on the, it's not on the, um.
On the annotated.
On the annotated, yeah.
Yeah, it is, it's under D.
We have a request, or, the Gridiron Club, um, football boosters had come to us offering a, to donate a shed for the football equipment and, um, cart that the trainer uses. And we had indicated that we would, um, endorse that, provided they got approval from the planning board. They were scheduled on the planning board agenda, um, and they were told that, um, the information that, that Kim had received, or that we know of, is that they were told that they had to have an application fee, a form, and a letter from the school committee.
Right.
So, with the confusion, um, that, that's going, or that was happening, you know, and it's unfortunate that for a, a group who wishes to make such a generous donation, um, we tried working with the town to see how we could assist, and why this got as convoluted as it did. What we did find, after consulting with our legal and with the town, is that we have the authority to accept the gift, provided that the organization goes through all of the appropriate, um, planning and approval processes for, for the town. So, that would mean that the Gridiron Club still would need to go to the planning board, since they are putting up a structure.
Do we still need to get a contract signed?
A- and, and I don't know where that lies, um, the concern from the town was, who is going to be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep, which the Gridiron Club, um, did indicate that they would be willing to
Maintain it, they did say that.
And, and they were willing to sign a memorandum of agreement, saying that they would maintain and, and upkeep that. We did, um, you know, so we're, we're trying, between Kim and Marie and
And Janet, oh my gosh.
We're trying to, um, you know, see how, how we could best help them, because we recognize the generosity and the support that they've given us. What we did find, though, is that at this point, moving forward, they would have to still get planning board approval. So, whatever the planning board is requiring, that would still, that, that was where we ended, correct, Marie?
Right, and at this point, I, I've heard that they feel it's too late in season, that they would rather go through all the motions and put it in next year.
I heard the same thing today.
I was just gonna say, Michael, you've heard something today as well. So, I don't, I mean, obviously, we're not gonna do it today or this week, with all we have going on, but, is it, um, you know, they got from the planning board that they need a, a letter of recommendation from the school committee, which obviously, we have no problem giving. Um, they need a Form E of some sort, and a deposit of some sort. Should we just put in our schedule at one point to draft a letter for them, so that they have it when they are ready to go to the planning board for their next?
So, what all they really need is, they just need a letter from Janet saying that the school committee voted at the, whatever the date of the meeting was, to approve, or to accept the gift from Long Meadow Gridiron Club for the purchase of X, and it just needs to be sent to their chair. And it's like a very simple, you know, communication. I don't know why they need a letter from us, when they can just read the minutes, but
I know.
I mean, so they would just need a letter from Janet, you know, I mean, that's, that's no, that shouldn't be anything.
Since we had already voted to agree.
Yeah, we voted, so, you know, whatever.
Diane, could I ask that sometime you draft a letter, and, so that we can get that off to them?
That way they have everything, whenever they go in front of
Whenever they're going to the planning board, like, whether they're gonna do it this year, or this next month.
Yeah, I mean, quite honestly, if you send it over to Bruce, um, Colton, the chair, they can keep it on file for them.
We have to, wouldn't we have to give it to the Gridiron Club? Not the planning board?
We can't send it directly, communicate directly to the chair, they approved it. Yeah, copy, all right, whatever, I don't wanna get in the middle of it, just, yeah, it's no big deal.
Doesn't planning want a foundation for this building?
They want, um, footings.
Footings.
Footings, and the Gridiron, I mean, when I talked to Ron,
Can I ask for the definition of footing? Without getting to, is cement, slab, in certain thicknesses?
No, it's not a slab, it's four foot, four foot down, it, it goes down in the ground past the frost line, so that with freezing and thawing in the ground, it keeps the structure level, so that there's no movement of the structure itself.
You don't have to put drainage stones underneath it or anything like that?
I don't know.
And who's gonna drill the holes for, I, I mean, is this
Well, I would think the people who install it, the, the shed company would, would do all that.
They will?
Yes, I mean, they
I don't know, I, I
Yeah, I would think they would do that.
And from your discussions with the Gridiron Club, they were willing to, if that's what it took to get the shed in?
They wanted to do whatever they needed to do to get it in, but, but for the season, and, I mean, not, you know.
But can they still install it, and just leave it empty?
They, they don't want to do that, because it'll only be there for one game, so they're going to put it off till next year.
Yeah.
So, we did just
Why not get it up and leave it there?
We did wanna acknowledge that, um, you know,
We try.
To the, the football, um, families and their booster organization, that it's most appreciated, it, you know, it's not something that we take lightly, we most, you know, definitely appreciate their support and their willingness to help our athletics, and that we have looked at every avenue and have tried everything that we know how to, to help them through the process, so I had just wanted to acknowledge that, thank you for reminding me.
I know. I was in communication with Janet about some things, and then we pulled Marie and Tom into it, and Marie made some phone calls, and I'm like, oh my goodness, it was getting very but I wanted to thank you for making the phone calls that you did, and you didn't have to do that, I mean, it was so I
Happy to do it.
So, just, thank you, we, we acknowledge your gracious offers. So, now you may make your motion.
I move that the school committee adjourn to executive session for the purposes of strategies relates to litigation, not to reconvene to open sessions, motion requires a roll call, vote.
Second.
All right, motion and a second.
Aye.
You don't have to say your name.
Can we just say?
Aye, state your name. Go ahead, Jonathan Stroh.
I'm Michael Clark.
Aye, Chairman Robinson.
Aye, Kim King.
Michelle Grodsky, aye.
Russell Dupree, aye.
All right, thank you, everybody, we will be back here on September twenty-eighth at seven PM. All of the information that we discussed this evening with Dr. Rush will be put up on our website. Thank you, and have a great night.